All right, ready? All right, welcome to City of Bay St. Louis. May twenty first, twenty twenty four council meeting. We'll start with the invocation by Reverend Reed, followed by.
Good evening, and let's pray tonight. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Father is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. My Father, as we stand in your presence, we just ask again for you to guide us and for you to keep us, and we want to be thankful tonight for your mighty hand that's been upon our city and upon our citizenry. We continue to need your wisdom and your knowledge and your understanding, because we put our trust in you. Father, we ask that you would guide us in our decisions on this evening, in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Let your legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to the meeting. First, we have some amendment to the agendas. Anybody got anything to add to the agenda items? Nothing. All right, first thing, guest, SSC O L A tennis team proclamation, Mr. Mayor. So we've got a tennis team here.
Tonight, I would like to recognize my example of the O L A Academy Tennis Team for their back-to-back state championship. So whereas the St. Stan's Law Rocket Charles and O L A Academy Crescent Tennis Team brought home the twenty twenty four Class Three A Tennis Championship, held at John Leslie's Tennis Court in Oxford, Mississippi, on April twenty second, twenty twenty four. Whereas the victory over Belmont secured a second consecutive state championship for the team and fourth state title overall. The victory displays your diligent work and devotion, not only as a team, but as an individual. And whereas the City of Bay St. Louis joins in the celebration of your victory, and we salute the team and the coaching staff and its successful season. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Ford, Mayor of the City of Bay St. Louis, along with the city council and all the citizens, do hereby congratulate the St. Stan's Law Rocket Charles, O L A Academy Crescent Tennis Team on a great season.
We want to thank Bay St. Louis, which has been there this year. Thank you very much, the city council. Proclamation. Um, we hope next year to come back and we say three Pete and twenty five. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Next item, next guest, Mr. Senator Mike Thompson, come up give an update. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Um, I'll be as brief as I can be. We did get a quite a bit done in this past legislative session. Some of that involved killing some bad bills, which takes more time than passing good bills, um, as you guys are aware. I was just gonna, I was just gonna run through some of the high points, some of the things I think directly affect the city or indirectly affect the city and its business. If you guys have any questions during the time that I'm going, just please let me know. I'm happy to try to answer those best I can. One of the big hot topics that came up early was the PERS. Late last year, the PERS Board voted to increase the employer compensate, or the employer contribution by five percent. That would have been a, I don't know what the number would have been for your budget, but that would have been a pretty significant burden for just about any municipal budget. Uh, one of the things that we did was to knock that contribution down to point five percent in over a five-year period. So your, your obligation to the employer contribu-, your obligation to your employee contribution will be going up, but it'll be more gradual than what the, where the board had originally passed. Along with that, we also changed the mechanics for the board to increase or make any changes to the employer contribution going forward. From now on, the board will have to have an independent actuarial accounting of the need for the increase or the rate change, and then that rate change will have to be approved by the legislature. That's a stopgap that didn't exist before. Along with that, we also added a hundred and ten million to the PERS system to try to supplant and offset the need for any future increases. With their investments, that hundred and ten million should theoretically turn into even more money, uh, going forward. And we also, uh, like I said, provided that made the requirement that they have to come forward some actuarial accounting before approving a rating. Uh, there were other appropriations made along the economic development tourism fronts. Uh, there were six point nine million appropriated to the Main Street projects, or Main Street program that, that affects all the Main Street programs across the state. I believe Bay St. Louis has one. We put a half million dollars into the Mississippi Tourism Association. Mississippi Tourism Association, uh, I think the number is fifty eight percent of the tourism dollars are generated here on the coast. Every, every tour across, from across the state, fifty eight percent of that's generated here on the coast, so certainly some of that money will make its way here. And then we appropriated forty million for different site development programs through M D A across the state. Transportation, uh, we added an additional three hundred and eighty million to D O T for roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure. That piggybacks is on top of six hundred and fifty million in appropriations to the transportation budget from last session. So that budget should be pretty shored up for a while. One of the, uh, topics that was, that we, that we worked on, that I've been working on since I've been there has been changes to the M A E P, the Public Education Funding Formula. M A E P over even my brief time in the legislature had to be supplanted with different buckets of money to accommodate teacher pay raises and some of the, some of the, uh, some of the sped programs. That new, the new funding formula has a solid base, uh, per student that the superintendents can use to base their funding on. And then it has weighted, uh, weighted variables for things like sped, C T E, the Career Technical Education Programming, any kind of, if there are poverty factors or poverty issues for that district, they can, they can receive additional funding dollars. The other important thing that that does is, uh, the changes, one other important change is we changed the way that student enrollment is calculated. Under M A E P, it was a snapshot in enrollment, which meant that it was very hard for the districts to predict what their funding was gonna be, because it was just this one, one snapshot. The new formula has a longer period of time where, where they account for students, because there are some districts that have more transient students than others. Uh, so there's a longer period of time so they can account for those kids in their funding as well as, uh, as, as well as provide some stability for the, for the districts for years out. It's not a year-to-year thing. It's revisited every four years. So it's a, hopefully a more reliable, more predictable funding formula for our public schools. Uh, one of the things that, uh, another, another item that we worked on was Canopy. I don't know if I may, how familiar you all are with Canopy and the work that they do. That's a nonprofit that provides a, uh, a sort of stopgap between our child, to our CPS and Department of Mental Health. Uh, they provide beds and housing for kids who are, who are in the system, who are in transition. There, there's been an issue, an ongoing issue with kids having to be transported out of state or certainly far away from, from their, their family and outside the home family. So with Canopy, we, we made appropriation of twenty million, uh, for them to establish the psychiatric residential treatment facility for those kids where they can have a place to stay, they can get the treatment they need. They're not scattered in hotels or wherever else. Uh, more coast-specific things that we've worked on. We worked on the Oyster Bottom Reef Leasing Program. There were some issues with the rollout at the department last year. We addressed those issues this past session. Hopefully the department will be rolling that out. What that basically, what that program's gonna do is privatize about eighty percent of the reefs that are out there to allow private, to allow the fishermen to lease that bottom and hopefully bring those reefs back into production. Some of you may have heard some of the work that we did on the tidlands bill this past session. I, I met with, I met with Heather, I've met with attorneys across municipalities and counties across the coast. The tidlands program has, uh, there've been some recent court decisions that pointed out some issues between our Gaming Control Act and our tidlands statutes as it relates to gaming. One of the things that we, we tried to do in the bill was actually pretty simple. To delete the political subdivision reference in the Thailand statute, which was one of the issues with a couple of court cases. Clarify that in order to qualify for a gaming license, you need to have a lease from the state of Mississippi and then codify the site suitability and amenity requirements. In all of that, there was a con-, there was a concerted effort to make sure that the municipal, the county, municipal harbors, that you guys would have exclusive control of your harbor. So the kind of mother may I game with the Secretary of State, we tried to address that in the bill. It ultimately, at the end of the day, at the end of the session, was one of the things that we had to give up. But it'll be an ongoing effort. There'll be an ongoing dialogue there this off-season and something we'll pick up with, uh, next session. Specific appropriations, uh, for Bay St. Louis, uh, there were, there were tidlands monies, uh, for the, for the, for the harbor to the tune of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, both through the county and through the city. So you guys will see that money coming in. There was no G C R F appropriation this year. I'm sure that you've heard all the stories and that I've heard that all the different stories that have been out there about what exactly happened, uh, at the end of the session last year. Basically what it was is there was an obligation made, um, late in the twenty-three session that obligated our G C R F funds for this year. We did have the opportunity to, those deposits, the G C R F money comes from the B P settlement. The B P settlement monies are deposited in April. Traditionally, we let those monies sit and we only appropriate monies that are available when we get into session in January. There was an opportunity this year to try to appropriate new money, quote-unquote, that came in in April. But the decision was made amongst your coast delegation to not make that appropriation, to go ahead and bank the money and let the, let cooler heads prevail and let's see what comes in the portal. Um, I can tell you that there is some conversation in the delegation about doing more programs instead of projects. Maybe some sort of revolving loan, establishing some sort of, uh, revolving loan program, a low-interest program, revolving loan program with those monies for new developments that come in that maybe can't get, can't get traditional banking, but we could help, we, we could establish that program to sort of perpetuate those monies for years going forward. I also want to just kind of touch on Brent Anderson, Representative Anderson was supposed to be here tonight. He had a family obligation come up. But do want to point out that your coast delegation is probably stronger now in the state legislature than they've been in the time that I've been there. The guys are, and gals are working great together, uh, as far as, you know, as, as time's going on. A lot of folks have gained positions, uh, different leadership roles, and as you're well aware, that, that, that usually translates into uh, ability to maneuver in the legislature and, uh, and to accomplish certain things that we can bring back home. So your coast delegation's working, uh, pretty well together and, uh, happy to answer any questions you guys may have about, about the legislative session either this past or coming up.
Any council questions? Good?
Good. Oh, I have one. So on the, on the PERS, it's gonna be point five percent each year?
For five years.
So each year is going up point five?
Yeah, so at the end of five, you'll be two and a half percent. That is down from you five, two and a half over five would have been ten, ten percent is what they propose.
Oh, is it? Um, what's the financial condition? Is it strong?
That is, it's, it's interesting. When you look at, when you look at PERS and you look at these retirement systems, there's an idea that, that they're never gonna be a hundred percent fully funded, because at the same time, you're never gonna have a hundred percent of your people retiring at the same time. It's, it's all, it's all a phase. So PERS is probab-, is about eighty percent funded, which means we've got twenty percent of our liabilities unfunded, but those liabilities aren't tomorrow liabilities. Those tomorrow, those liabilities are much further down the line. So some of the issues that, that we see with PERS, as far as what I'm seeing in the legislature, what I'm, what I'm learning, there's some component to it that's garbage and garbage. I have kind of, you know, PERS has predicted this, the PERS Board has predicted it's twenty-five billion dollar gap. But when you start looking at the numbers and you talk to the, and you talk to the PERS folks, the, you, you find that that twenty-five billion is based on a worst-case scenario, that if they don't earn another dollar on the money, on their investment, which historically is not accurate, they, they, they maybe performed under budget. They budget themselves at about seven and a quarter is what their anticipated rate of return is. They've never underperformed that. Now, they have underperformed the market, you know, when you had those years of, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, when you were, when the market was twelve, sixteen percent, we were still at seven and a half. But those are very conservative investments. So there's some, there's some component of that, that, of that eighty percent unfunded liability or twenty percent unfunded, there's some component of that that may or may not be accurate. That's one of the reasons why we're now requiring the PERS, PERS to have an independent actuarial accounting of the condition of the fund for, for us to review, rather than relying on what their wealth managers and fund managers who are being paid by the, by the fund. Rather than relying on what they, they're accounting, we're gonna have an independent actuarial accounting of the PERS, uh, the PERS system. Can I answer your question?
It, it, it does. Yeah, I just, I just worry that, you know, you have more retired people than people contributing into it.
Yeah.
And that's why you're raising the, uh.
Raise the employer contribution. That's why we put in another hundred, we put in a hundred and ten million this year. I've been told that to anticipate additional contributions to the PERS system to help shore it up as we're, as this accounting's coming in. And I would expect that in the future, uh, probably pretty near future, there will be a fifth tier added. Uh, there are four retirement tiers now, depending on when you got into the system. I anticipate there'll be a fifth tier that may not look, it won't look like the current system. You've got some challenges. You know, we're, we are right now a defined benefit program. We have a contract with our, with our employees that says, this is what you will receive in retirement benefits when you retire from the system. That defined benefit is irrespective of what the fund is able, how the fund is able to form. I think there's some appetite out there right now for a sort of hybrid between a defined benefit and a defined contribution type plan. So there's, there's a lot of different, if you look around the country, there are a lot of different models that, that, that the public employee retirement system can look like. I think there's a desire to make it a little more stable, not just for the retirees, but also for the, for the system and the future of the system itself. That's gonna require probably not current retirees or current system employees, but future employees. Those benefits will probably look a little different.
I understand.
I had a question, Senator Seale. Senator Thompson, thanks for coming and giving us a brief and the work you did in at the Capitol. Uh, you had mentioned in the next fiscal year with the G C R F funds being more program-driven, um, and project-driven and, and hoping you can get a boost for development. Can you expand upon what is that vision for development? Are you looking at, is it commercial development or exactly what was that kind of, what is that vision for development?
And that's one of the really tricky things about G C R F, right? When I first got to the legislature, that was the first year that we had G C R F, and the question was, or the, the, the mantra was, we want projects that are gonna be transformational. Well, what does that mean? Which transformational for Bay St. Louis may not be the same thing that's transformational for Waverly, Diamond Head, Picky Inn. So this idea of defining what that exactly looks like varies place by place, project by project. One of the things that I think, one of the things that we have done with G C R F over the years is we've always had, and this comes from the ment-, the same approach that we use for bond program, for tidlands monies, where you've got projects that are, that are important, but they tend to be smaller projects, right? A couple hundred thousand dollars here, a couple hundred thousand dollars there. That same sort of mentality bled into the G C R F, has bled into the G C R F appropriations process. What I think there's an appetite for is bigger projects. You look around the state right now, you've got the aluminum plant going into, the Golden Triangle there up in Lowndes County. That's some monster investment. You've got the battery plant going up into Marshall County. Uh, I think that's a hundred, a hundred million, a hundred fifty million dollars, dollars of state money going up there. You've got Amazon going into Madison. Those are big, big, big projects, right? Lots of jobs, lots of well-paying jobs going into fairly rural, rural areas. That's gonna be transformational. What can we do with G C R F to attract some of the types of projects here? That's kind of the mindset. The other thing that we're worried about is that money's gonna run out at some point in time, right? I think we got it till twenty thirty-four. I personally would like to see us do something with the money that perpetuates the fund so that the coast can benefit from that money for years going forward. So some type of low-interest revolving loan program where somebody needs to borrow, you know, it's, there's some, whatever the number is, whatever the math works out, but so that we put in ten million dollars into a project, they go forward, they're able to complete the project, bank it, the state gets its ten million dollars back into the G C R F fund, and we can do another project.
So would that, that basically be considered like a grant anticipation loan type program or?
We're, we're looking at different models. We're looking at different models on what that loan program could look like and also who would be the best party to administer that?
Gene, right now, it's probably more similar to like the health department, the way the health department does the, the, um, S R F loans through the health. So if you need to go get a new water sewer, the average, I think it's like one percent interest rate, but the health department's doing those right now and have been for years. So I'm thinking that's something we're familiar with, that we've done here before.
So I'm just wondering if, if, if they were able to do something like that, if it would be made available to us for some of the projects we have coming down the pipe that we've been talking about, having to possibly pull funds from here, from there, possibly grant anticipation loan, if we can get a better rate once with this, to make those projects happen.
And I don't know what that program's gonna look like. It's still, it's, I'd, it's pretty conceptual. We've been talking about it for a couple of years. But there's definitely an appetite for it right now to try to perpetuate those money.
But that wouldn't be, and so I, I like that thought, Congressman Hoffman, too, but we're looking at fiscal year twenty-five, so, right? So it'd be probably a year out of even having an ability to, and once that gets conceptualized, so it's.
Right, even if we put in, even if we pass it in next year, you're still a couple of years out before that, that program would be propped up. But that's something that we're working on.
Essentially what it allows is the state to be the bank. So it's not actually a grant anticipation note, you know, but it does.
Case by case, based on what they see is a good project based on reimbursement.
Just like the Water Tower project, you know, it's, it's ranked, they're, they decide who's capable or who's eligible to have the revolving loans and, and that's, that's the way you proceed. Like I said, about one percent interest rate. Sometimes even, I think right now they're actually seven point eight, maybe, the current health department loan.
So that, that would be great.
Any more questions, council? Got one question?
I was saying, you talked about bridges and stuff like that on, in, in Bay St. Louis on Good Street. There's a bridge right now that I wouldn't let my grandmother pass over. It's been there, it's been there for years. And when the other people can't, I always remember, they're supposed to have gotten it fixed. So I have a bridge under, under the next street that looks like it'll stay forever, but it looks like it's a major project to get this now. I have a wife that has cancer, she gets sick, and that, they, they built it back there with a lot of money, back money's coming in.
Over now, it's big trucks.
And they got, they have trucks going over, we're doing that. And that, and that is not gonna last. And I don't wanna have to get stuff over there. I can't get an emergency unit in there to help my wife or anybody else.
Right.
We were told about nine years ago that they were gonna get an architect and see what it would take to fix it and what they could do for transportation.
Okay, yeah, well, again, we can.
And all they did was come in and do a temporary fix and pour asphalt in the hole. But that's not a fix.
No, well, uh.
That's on the list. Good Street is on the list. The culvert there, the culvert going through Good Street, that's on the list to get replaced.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's been on the list supposedly for nine years.
I don't know about that, but I know it's on the list now.
Okay, all right, all right, we got it. Good. Take note of it. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
That's a city, that's a city.
That's a city bridge, yes. Yep, okay, we got it. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. I'm always available if y'all have anything you want to discuss about what's going on in the state.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you got a proclamation for Brain Cancer Awareness Month?
What we have is, um, Brain Cancer Awareness Month for the month of May. And whereas the City of Bay St. Louis is dedicated to raising awareness about brain cancer and supporting research, diagnosis, and Medicare. And whereas it is estimated by the National Brain Tumor Society that over one million Americans are currently living with a brain tumor. And whereas the month of May is dedicated to increasing awareness and advocating for treatment and research. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Ford, Mayor of the City of Bay St. Louis, along with the city council and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-four, as Go Gray in May for Brain Cancer Awareness Month.
All right, let's get to the fun stuff. Planning and zoning. First application, Gulf Coast Development Group, application sketch, sketch plaid approval submitted by Gulf Coast Development Group LLC. The applicant's request to subdivide one parcel and two new parcels of land. Both parcels will meet minimum, meet requirements for subdivision of property. Property is located one, 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 two, four Stewart Drive. And property is owned R one, single-family district. Anyone speak here in favor, talk about the project? Anyone in opposition? In the motion?
I make a motion to follow the recommendation of P N Z and approve this application.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come forward, please. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Yes, ma'am.
Be involved in Valentine and Central and Third, uh, other areas, um, I'm opposed to it. I'm not even sure where it's, where it is, but it's taking over our entire area. We don't have the infrastructure at all. Right now, going through Valentine Street is like a checkerboard. You have the Dodge cars and such. And, um, so, yes, I'm opposed to it. I'm not sure what other explanation you may want, but.
What's your name for the record, please?
Kristi Easterly, three, five, two, Valentine Street.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, so this is all one, correct? So it's just single-family, single-family dwellings. I think both these parcels would be thirty-two to thirty-three thousand square feet right now, which is well beyond what the twelve thousand minimum apartment is.
Yes. Yes. And Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of P N Z and approve this application.
Motion, Mr. Reed, to approve?
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo. Can you call the discussion? Vote the motion?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed, seven zero. Next is Giometta, application for sketch, sketch plaid approval submitted by Chris Giometta. The applicant is requesting to reconfigure two existing parcels which will meet requirements for subdivision of property. Property is located nine twenty-eight Old Spanish Trail. Uh, the property is owned R one, single-family district. Again, a subdivision of complying, uh, property. Any questions? Anybody for or against the application? Pleasure to counsel.
Just discussion, that's the seal too. I guess the captain's not here calling in. Um, on the second parcel, so the small, so both do exceed the minimum square footage and lot width. But on parcel B, the twelve thousand eight hundred fifty feet square feet, where's the access gonna be coming in from? Cause it looks like you've got the triangle and then you've got the rectangular piece. I'm assuming that's gonna be parcel B, so where is that access point?
Parcel B going over Spanish Trail.
So what about, so how's it being, cause I don't see any houses being split.
Uh, plat map shows, I think, Kyle, um, so you've got parcel two, which is the triangle.
So they're both the access from Spanish-
The dotted line, the dotted line is with the, the setbacks.
Okay, that's what I wanna make sure it is-
Parcel one is-
I was just looking at what was outlined on that one map.
It kinda goes down and then comes over, not like an L shape, but like a sock or a footlemos.
Okay. And it's a lot-
That's a little bit bigger than an acre of land total, so. Both access on Old Spanish Trail, looks like, yeah.
Okay. More discussion? Motion?
Make a motion and approve uh, follow P and Z recommendation and approve this application.
Motion, Reverend Reed?
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo. Any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed, seven zero. Next, application is CB Contractors, application of sketch plat approval, variance is only known submitted by CB Contractors. Applicants are wanting to subdivide one parcel into two parcels of land. Parcel one would need a variance of three thousand one hundred nine square feet. Variance resulting in a total of eight thousand eight hundred ninety-one square feet to the lot area. A variance of twenty-four point nine nine feet resulting in seventy-five point zero one to the lot width. Parcel two will need a variance of three thousand one hundred eleven square feet resulting in eight thousand eight hundred eighty-nine square feet to the lot area and a variance of twenty-four point nine nine feet resulting in seventy-five point zero one width to the lot width. Property is located five, uh, five fifty-five, fifty-five Harrison Road. Uh, property is R one, single family residential district. Anyone speak for or against this application, any questions?
Hey, good afternoon, Chuck Butler, CB Contractors, two zero three nine six Beninite Road, Dilport, Mississippi. Um, I'm proposing this, I purchased the lot, or I purchased as two lots from the Cassards. Um, and instead of doing a hundred foot lot, fifty foot lot, I would like to, I'm proposing two seventy-five foot lots. Uh, this would be uh, greater or larger, as they sit right now, it would still be greater than fifty, larger than fifty-six percent of the lots on the road, uh, a lot. Uh, and so, uh, across the street, it's acreage, it's not zoned R one, it's waterfront property. Thirty acre feet. Uh, so it's a little different. But next to it, uh, right next to it are fifty foot lots and then on those other values, Good Street are fifty foot lots. Back south, there's fifty foot lots, so um, I do have some documents, uh, you guys mind share, I'll share with you.
While he's passing this out, I just wanna point out to the council that this is a pre-existing subdivision lot. So these have already been lotted as, I wanna say, if I'm reading this right, lot seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So he's not creating a new lot, what he's doing is taking lot nineteen and lot seventeen and then splitting lot eighteen to make, you know, two lots.
Yes.
So these two lots were in common ownership or they were bought from the same individual?
Yes, sir. And they had been vacant since Katrina, uh, you know, the bulkheads in need of work, the peer that worked. Quite frankly, it's kind of a liability issue uh, out there right now.
Okay. Alright, anyone speaking in opposition or concerns? Yes, ma'am, from forward, identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Kim Mart, I live at seventy-two Good Street. And I'm opposed to it because I realize back when Jordan River Isles was established, all the lots were fifty foot. And our, most of them were little bitty camp type things. Then they made a ruling to make it a hundred feet. If you change that now, our prices of our properties go down. And everybody, I, I realize some of them have to be grandfathered, there is no land to buy to add to them. But if you have enough, you should have to use just that. You know, I mean, we doing the best we can, they're no longer camps, they are nice homes. And it would just cheapen everybody else's property.
So today he can build on that fifty foot lot and build on a hundred foot lot of separate home. Because they're two separate lots today, so one lot is, both lots are buildable. One will be fifty foot lot and the other will be a hundred foot lot, buildable. Yes, ma'am, so they'll be, they're separate parcels. So he can build, yeah, he can build two houses, one will be on a fifty foot lot, yes, ma'am. Right, yes, right, or smaller. Yes, ma'am.
He's trying to make them where they both, where there's no fifty foot, it's two seventy-five foot lots.
Making two bigger lots.
Fifty and a hundred, he's wanting to put two seventy-five.
No, two seventy-five. So they're bigger-
Right now he could build a house on the fifty, he can build two houses no matter what. One on a fifty and one on a hundred. He wants to split it and build two houses still on seventy-five foot lots. He's making one lot bigger and the other one smaller and what's around it is fifty foot, you know, on the sides of it and everything. So he's wanting to make bigger than what's next to it and everything.
He's not, he's not trying to go back to the original fifty foot lot.
No, he's not wanting to build three, only wanting to build two.
It was?
It was three before, correct.
No, that's on, that's on something else.
It was platted, it was originally platted, when it was platted as a subdivision, it was platted as three fifty foot lots. Lot seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And so what he's trying to do, instead of build a house, one house on a hundred foot lot and one house on a fifty foot lot, he's trying to split that middle lot in half so that you have seventy-five and seventy-five.
He's making it bigger, actually. Right, it's better than a fifty foot and a hundred foot. I mean, it was-
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sometimes it's confusing looking at these flats and stuff.
He's not asking for side yard setback variances.
No, this is just lot size variance.
Just lot size. So in other words, whatever the lots, the variant, I mean, whatever the side yard setback is, ten feet?
Eight feet on side.
On that side?
Uh, hi, my name is Peter Gamble at fifty-six Harrison Road. And uh, uh, I'm, I'm opposed to the two seventy-five foot lots and I'll explain why. And I'll also say that uh, I've been there a long time and I knew Mr. and Mrs. Burgess. It might be three fifty foot lots, but she had a single house on the three fifty foot lot. So it was one house on one piece of property. And uh, when the zoning came on, I would have assumed that, and I don't know the difference between a lot and a tax parcel or whatever. But uh, it seems to me that uh, if you have one piece of land that used to have one house on it, then uh, uh, that's one piece of land. And under the zoning, you know, they, they wouldn't uh, be asking for a variance if it was buildable as, you know, one house on one piece of land. So my understanding is you can only grant the variance if, if uh, if it's not buildable as it is. Uh, it was owned by the Burgess's, it was owned by the Cassards, uh, and now it's owned by a Mr. Butler. And it's buildable. And, and so if you're saying that because prior to zoning, um, uh, prior to zoning, you know, it was lotted as fifty foot lots in the whole neighborhood. Um, you know, that, I, I, I don't understand the legal implications of all that. I can tell you there have been other lots on Harrison Road where people wanted to take and, and make fifty foot lots out of a hundred foot lots and those were denied by the city council uh, a couple of years ago. So, so basically, uh, you know, I, I don't have a lot of knowledge. I don't know if it's one piece of land or three pieces of land. Clearly, if it's one piece of land, um, then it's buildable without a variance and the council can't grant the variance. Uh, if it's actually three separate pieces of land, you know, I, I, I don't know. But I can tell you that Mrs. Burgess had one house there, lots of nice trees, artesian well. Uh, and, and uh, it was, it was great. And I think that's what zoning was trying to accomplish in the neighborhood, was houses like that on pieces of land like that. So I, I, uh, uh, I, I certainly hate to speak out against somebody's project on their own land, but I mean, I think there's a lot of people who make assumptions about what's allowed in that neighborhood. And if the council's saying today that any lot on, in Jordan River Isles, that's a hundred foot lot, can be split into two fifty foot lots, if in the beginning it was lotted as fifty foot lots, then you're gonna get a lot more applications for fifty foot lots.
Thank you. Okay, anyone?
Doug, so I'm looking at the plat map uh, from the county and it says legal description lot seventeen through nineteen is one lot.
Yeah, they have it platted all as one, so I'm not so sure if you bought. I don't know, I'd have to look at your deed, I don't know if you bought two and then they combined it all on one, um, one deed, so they, they may have, they may have combined them and he may not have even have realized it, depending on how the agent would have done the, the title work.
So if they were combined, so they were all separate, so three separate fifty foot lots?
Well, probably originally it was probably a hundred and fifty.
He's buying three lots, he is buying three lots and right now they're combined as one tax parcel.
Well, according to the county records, it's one lot.
No, 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 it's three lots, it's three subdivided lots on one county tax parcel. Sometimes we use that language interchangeable, but it's really, in situations like these, you have to keep the, you have to keep it apart. It's three, it's lot seventeen, lot eighteen, and lot nineteen of some subdivision, Jordan River Isle subdivision, but it's one Hancock County tax parcel. So for tax purposes, it is one, I wanna say lot, one parcel, but it's, it's three subdivided lots. Per their original subdivision plan.
Yeah, but once they buy it, then it becomes, it's a, it comes under, once, you know, all the grandfather stuff is gone.
Then now it's just your decision.
I, I really don't see how you could build on the fifty foot lot. It's all parceled as one lot now.
Agreed, I don't, don't want a fifty foot, that's why I'm-
And it's zoned R one. So I don't think you can get a permit to build on a fifty foot lot. So I mean, can y'all explain that?
Yes.
I mean, no, hold on. I mean, the mayor says they can build on a fif-, he could split this fifty feet out and build on it. But this is all, this is all deeded at one lot.
He could, he could sell a hundred footer of it and have a fifty foot lot next to it, all I gotta do is get a new parcel number issued.
But you would have to have it re-subdivided.
All you gotta do is go down to the tax office and have it done. You don't have to come through the city council or plan to zone it to do that.
But Gary, I ju-, I just had uh, some lots on Keller Street in the Morgan Park subdivision, they're sixty foot lots. And um, somehow they, uh, the county combined two of my lots together. Uh, and I had to go back to the county to tell them that, uh, no, they're buildable because you have uh, several houses on Keller Street that's built on sixty foot lots. And they combined mine back together, so I had to fill out a piece of paper to say, you know, I, you know, we don't want these combined, we want them separated sixty foot lots.
But you've always been, always been the owner of them.
Say that again?
But you were always the owner of them.
No, um, I bought it from another owner and there were, there were two, um, it was, it was two par-, it was two parcels then, but somehow the county had, you know, put them together. And I had to re-separate them, I didn't separate that.
Yeah, because you can't subdivide them lots to twenty-four or twenty-five foot lots, but you can always go back to the original subdivision plat that was presented, is my understanding, to-
For the fifty.
To the fifties and get parcel number issued. And then you got pre-existing non-conforming lots that are buildable by right.
Well, and what makes it, the area that makes this difficult is when these lots, when the zoning doesn't match what was originally platted, what makes it hard is that, I kinda hate to say this, but if he just went out and transferred one of those lots out, you guys may or may not know that that even happened. So it's, would then just become, you know, whether or not it was caught during the building department process. And sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, because the only thing that changes is the parcel number. Well, oftentimes you have zero, zero, one, zero, zero, two, zero, I mean, sometimes you go all the way up, you know, depending on how a property's been subdivided. So it's, it's, it makes it more difficult if, if something is already platted and then they start transferring it out because the deed doesn't, I mean, the deed just says lot seventeen.
Why did um, planning zoning uh, deny it?
Um, Mr. Breland motioned to deny because he said the lots next to it weren't small, but they are, that's why. Goes, I, I, I have another property. Five, uh, and approved it, approved, but you know, not approved that. Uh, but again, there's several fifty foot lots, but I'm not wanting them. Two seventy-five.
And at seventy-five, uh, at seventy-five feet, I mean, it's gonna be bigger than fifty-six uh, square feet.
Alright. Come to the mic, please.
Why did y'all make the decision that the lots would be a hundred foot if y'all now gonna make them smaller again?
Zoning decision we made in two thousand and six.
And, and that decision was challenged, especially in, off six oh three, and they had to make R one eight because all them lots were originally platted fifty foot and they couldn't-
Well, I know, and all of them, when ours were originally fifty foot. And everybody building is buying two lots. Now, there's a couple of them that built, but the lots had to be grandfathered because there was no other property for them to acquire by it. We have three or four of them on our street like that right now. But the property next door was owned by somebody else and then, you know, the next one bought from family. It was only a fifty foot lot. They had no place to get any more land, so they built on the fifty. And I understand the grandfathering concept, but I don't understand going against the ruling that was made. You know, why, why should some get variances and others not be able to?
I think it's a case by case basis, some tried to go back to probably fifty foot.
But we don't want that, I mean, we have nice homes there. And that's just gonna depreciate the value of our homes.
Okay, one more comment, please.
Peter Gamble, fifty-six Harrison again. I, I don't mean to uh, uh, suggest that I know why Mr. Breland uh, uh, proposed a motion to deny. But it, uh, but I did speak at that uh, event and, and what I said there was what I think I told you all is that if you can build on the lot, then the city council's not allowed to grant the variance. So the only reason that you might be able to grant the variance is if there is something about this historic fifty foot lots in that neighborhood. And, and you can check your own records from Harrison Road, there were some that were denied. And uh, and in, if, if this is approved, you're not only, uh, certainly, uh, you know, Mr. Chuck will, you know, build his nice houses, no doubt. But, you know, you, I also think about all the people who might have considered buying property, but they knew with the law set or they thought they knew with the zoning law set, and maybe they didn't buy it. So you sort of disadvantaged the people that either didn't apply for a variance that they thought wouldn't be granted under the law. Or you disadvantaged people who may have bought some property not knowing that everything in Jordan River Isles is fifty foot lots now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, council, discussion?
And I just wanted to bring, I mean, it's come up a couple of times and I just wanna reiterate, so based on our ordinance, Article eight hundred variances and it lists uh, recommended variances uh, that should be considered, you know, item F. The existence of a non-conforming use of a neighboring land, building or structure in the same district or permitted or non-conforming uses in other districts shall not constitute a reason for the requested variance. Again, it's, you know, it's the old adage, just cause there was a variance given, a similar variance, it is case by case and you can't predicate your whole, your whole decision based off of where there was a, a situation where a variance was, was given. Again, it's, you know, it's the old adage, just 'cause there was a variance given, a similar variance, it is case by case and you can't predicate your whole, your whole decision based off of where there was a, a situation where variance was, was given. Uh, that, that's one of the items that you cannot make that determination on, so that comes up a lot, is that just 'cause you give a variance on one, how come I can't get one? And it's, that's something that, you know, it's, again, it's our own ordinance, variance and, and reasons why you shouldn't.
My, my thought process is that there's legal mechanisms for him to build two houses on this property. I would much rather see two seventy-five foot lots than one fifty foot and one hundred foot and have them uniform. I won't go into the legal mechanisms publicly, but there are ways that it can be done, there's ways that could probably get back to three lots. And build on three fifty foot lots. It, it, zoning is there to do it.
No, you can't, you can't split it, you can't keep splitting the lot.
You're not splitting it, you're putting it back to its original plat, that it was platted.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Any more discussion with council, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to override P and Z's recommendation and approve.
Motion, motion, Mr. Salvo to deny, uh, to approve?
I second.
Second, Mr. Reed, any more discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay, motion fails, four to three. Yep, motion failed, so the motion has been denied. Alright, next, application?
Wait, okay, so.
And I need a motion to hold up their application.
So, one, they're getting upset and I don't think they realize what happened here. But, yeah, so the, Josh's motion was to overturn and it failed, so if y'all are going to approve planning and zoning's recommendation to deny, then we need a motion for that.
Okay, motion?
Motion to deny.
Okay.
Motion denied, mister.
Maybe they're going with you, but I don't think you're listening, so if you listen, they did, Josh's.
No block?
Cause the motion failed.
Second?
Second.
Second, mister? Lewis? Any more discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, alright, motion denies, approve. Alright, second application. Butler application, application for sketch plat, sketch plat approval and variance that is owned in order submitted by Charles Butler. Applicant is requesting subdivide two parcels and three parcels of land, parcel one will need a variance of twenty-five hundred and eighty-two square feet resulting in nine thousand four hundred and eighteen square feet to lot area and sixteen point six seven feet resulting in eighty-three point three three to lot width. Parcel two will need variances of two thousand five hundred and eighty square feet resulting in nine thousand four hundred and twenty square feet to lot area sixteen point six three feet resulting in eighty-three point three seven to lot width. Parcel three will need a variance of two thousand six hundred and seven square feet resulting in nine thousand three hundred and ninety-three square feet to lot area and sixteen point six three resulting in eighty-three point three seven to the lot width. Property is located forty-five street, um, property is zoned R one, single family district. Um, applicant, uh, Butler, who's here, approve.
Mister Seal, can I just also remind the council that our public hearing for this took place at planning and zoning? So just, I wanted to remind you guys and the crowd that our public hearing where the public can talk amongst one another and to planning and zoning took place at the public, I mean, at the, yeah, at the public hearing at planning and zoning.
Yep, okay.
Well, I will say, I mean, I did watch the, I wasn't in the meeting, I did watch the video, it didn't seem there was a lot of discussion propagated from the commission at times, so I do think you'd have people here that wanna come speak, um, I'd like to hear from the citizens as well.
Just keep in mind that legally, the public hearing that you noticed for people to come took place at planning and zoning, so that's where that information should transpire.
Mister Butler, anything, what come to talk about the proposal?
Well, this is on fiber, uh, you know, two streets over. Um, again, uh, you know, we're looking at, most of the lots on this road are fifty feet, uh, I bought this piece, it's two hundred and fifty feet of, uh, buyer advantage. Uh, I was proposing, again, you know, not trying to overcrowd the road or anything, uh, trying to keep it as large as possible instead of two hundreds and a fifty or, you know, even five fifties, I don't wanna do that. I was trying to, so I was proposing, uh, three eighty-three foot lots, um.
Say that again? I'm sorry?
Uh, three eighty-three foot lots?
Okay.
Um, and, and so, um, the, of course, this property is, um, you know, been vacant since Katrina, um, needs to be cleaned up, bulkhead put in and stuff like that, uh, but, I mean, it's really the same as Harrison, uh, except larger lots. Uh, on fiber, they would be eight three feet, um, which, looking at this, uh, you know, it would, it would, again, be in the upper percentile, uh, larger than sixty-five percent of the lots that are there.
So, uh.
And I, let me say this too, be- because with all due respect, per your say for property values, uh, in my proposal that I submitted to the zoning commission, uh, I'd put some prototype homes in there. There, there is, you know, seventy-five feet, it's, it's, it's a nice lot, um, and, and just as a three, but these are, these are gonna be five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar homes that are gonna be fortified.
Excuse me, excuse me.
She has me confused.
Nope, please get to us to council, thank you.
Um, so, anyway, the, these homes are gonna do nothing but bring, uh, you know, homes that are, that are selling and gonna increase the price per square foot. Uh, you know, generate revenue for the city because as we know, there's a lot of secondary homes over there, they don't get homestead exemption. You know, they don't use our school system, they don't use nine-one-one, um, you know, they, they, they give us their tax dollars and they, they, quite frankly, they, I've talked to several of them, I've talked to several residents on fiber, they don't want big lots, they don't want huge, but I don't like building on a fifty foot lot, I just, it's too close. As a builder, there's too much liability and I try to be a good neighbor, you know, and, so that's why, again, instead of a hundred and fifty on Harrison, I know you guys have voted on it, but, uh, same thing here, instead of two hundreds and a fifty, um, three eighty-threes. Uh, and I would ask, uh, you know, I would ask, I know you guys have voted, but if there's any reconsideration on Harrison, it's, um.
Alright.
I appreciate your time and, and consideration.
Alright, so what breakdown is lot width, so on this chart, we have lot width, there's one twenty-five foot lot, there's twenty-nine fifty foot lots, there's nine seventy-five foot lots, eighteen hundred foot lots, three one-twenty-fives and one hundred and seventy-five foot lots as far as the breakdown?
And that's as it sits now, that's without, that's with my lots included in that piece.
Alright.
So the two, two of the one-twenty-fives would be.
Okay. Alright, quick comment from the. Nope, come, come to the, you need to come to the microphone, please, don't do it by yourself, real quick.
You're across, across from me.
Don't invite, talk to the council.
Oh, yeah, he's across from me, anyway, that's fine, he's gonna build a house over there. I wanna know if this is gonna be these Airbnb houses there, or this is gonna, he's gonna be selling to people that's gonna be living there to respect the living situations that go on over there. Like in the last past couple of weeks ago where people with, had, renting over there or whatever, had, had a child running around in a golf cart, playing the music up to the high heavens, you know, that's fine, you know, you can't stop me if anyone wants to build, I understand that. But I want, I wanna make sure that I don't have lunatics living across, coming to disturb my, my town. I'm eighty years old and I don't need all of that.
Ah, great, thank you, one more comment?
I own the property on Good Street, my name is William Wickman, I'm at forty-three Good Street. My wife and I just, uh, bought a house, bought that house, um, on a one hundred and fifty foot lot. We just moved here from Wisconsin, got great neighbors here, um, quiet neighborhood, trying to keep it that way. Um, my biggest problem right now is that we're taking across, um, the road there on fiber, we have two one hundred and twenty-five foot lots. And I'd like to keep it that way if at all possible, two homes on the other side of mine, I have no problem with building, don't get me wrong on that, we should be building communities, it's taxed out. But to be continually splitting these lots and putting more homes on these properties, puts a big burden on our neighborhoods. I've got a hundred and fifty feet, I've got a very large home on that, on my lot and I'm planning on putting a lot of money into. And our neighbors are all putting a lot of money into their properties, it's such, my next door neighbor to the north of me, uh, he just put a big addition on hits. Neighbor from them, they had purchased the lots across from them so nobody could do further building on those. These are two one hundred and twenty-five foot lots right now, please keep those as such. Eighty-three foot variance, please deny that for us, for our neighborhood, I appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, comments from the council?
Yeah, just to follow with Mr. Wickman, I mean, there is a map with Good Street incorrect, I mean, there, I think the smallest lot width is a hundred foot. I've got a hundred, hundred, one fifty, two fifty, two hundred, I know administration, in part of the recommendation for approval, mentioned the fifty foot lot next to this, but there's also to the other side, a hundred foot lot, so if we're gonna, you know, compare, there is also, uh, conforming R, R one, a hundred foot lot there too. I just wanted to point that out.
Fiber's a lot of fifty foot lots on fiber.
Yeah, cross from it, did you see that?
Yeah.
Did you see that on fiber cross?
Yeah, just looking at the map.
Alright, discussion with council? Motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion, we file P and Z's recommendation and approve this application.
Motion, Mr. No Block?
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo? More discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes six two. Five two, I'm sorry, my math's bad, trying to stay ahead of us. Alright, Nuss, application of variance, own in order submitted by Pete Nuss, applicant is, wants to construct a dwelling on her property and requesting a variance of three foot resulting in five foot setback to the side yard. Property is located two eighteen Valentine Street, property is zoned R two, it's family district. Mister Nuss, explain what you wanna do here, sir?
How you doing, Pete Nuss, uh, my home address is two zero one Spencer Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana, seven zero one two four. Is, I think there's a letter of recommendation from my neighbor in the file too, that came from the planning zoning, uh, committee, could read that.
I do not have it in front of me, I had it in my package and.
They were for it.
They were for it, yes, they were.
Uh, yeah, we just wanna move the house over three feet within that eight foot setback to a lot more space. The head president said with the neighbor already, they were built in the five feet, just wanna get a little more room on that side yard.
That's where their driveway as well, right?
Correct.
But the neighbors were here.
Yeah.
And they did speak in favor of the.
Yes, sir.
Alignment of the property.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, any one in the audience against application, would like to speak against it? Council, discussion? Motion?
Motion to follow P and Z's recommendation and approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, second, Mr. Reed, any more discussion, all in favor, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Motion passed seven zero.
Thank you.
Angle withdrawn. Smith, application variance zoning ordinance submitted by Ann Smith, applicant is wanting to renovate existing dwelling, they're requesting a two foot variance resulting in eleven point nine foot setback to the front yard. Variance three percent resulting in forty-eight percent of the maximum lot coverage. Property is located one oh two Carroll Avenue, property is zoned R one, single family district.
Alright, we are in the process of renovating that house.
Renovate yourself, sir.
David Rush, uh, one eight three nine six Running Meat Road, Patrick, yeah. And Smith, the owner. We are renovating that, we've been approved for the four foot porch, we tore four foot off the front of the existing house, put the four foot porch. But it was originally designed for six foot and, um, so we are requesting, uh, two foot variance to come forward, put a six foot porch on it to make it more proportionate in that neighborhood. And then the, the setbacks is varies all, always through that neighborhood across three is less than that, less than eleven point seven. So that's our recall.
Okay, thank you, anyone in opposition to this application? Council, discussion? Pleasure to counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, variance request by Miss Anne Smith located at one oh two Carroll Avenue.
Motion, Mister Hoffman?
Second.
Second, Mister Salvo, discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed seven zero, thank you. Next, Beachtime LLC, application variance zoning ordinance submitted by Beachtime LLC, applicant is wanting to construct a dwelling on her property, they're requesting a variance of five foot resulting in twenty foot setback to the front yard and a variance of five foot resulting in fifteen setback, foot setback to rear yard, property is located three thirty-six State Street, property is zoned R two, two family district.
Yeah, David Rush, Beachtime LLC, one eight three nine one Running Meat Road, Patrick, yeah. So we, we are, um, wanting to build there and we're requesting the five foot variance, like you have read, for the front, five foot. And again, in that neighborhood, they build them two foot from the property line, up to five foot off the back property line and some of them up fifteen foot off.
That's a varied state of construction there. Um, anyone in opposition to this application? Council, discussion?
Yeah, I was just, uh, mayor, I know the administration recommended denial of the variances, is that still, is that still the recommendation?
Already been split. And this is a lot of single family back in there and worried about, you know, what's going there with a single family duplex, cause the duplex is allowed in there as well. But since the lot was already split, we'd like to see the house fit the lot. You know, too many times we get into where we, we allow lots to split and then we also give variance to houses to fit the lot instead of house fit, you know, the other way around. So, I mean, that's the only rea- you know.
Yep, it, it, can you expand, it said parking concerns to you, can you expand on that?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, it is one-way street, narrow street and everything, but I mean, I think whatever they building on, you know, house wise and all, they'll have parking, I, I would think, I mean, it's got to.
Parking concern is not specific to just this application and.
No, it's every, believe me, it's everywhere.
Right, so I'm saying it's more widespread than just this, so that's not.
Yes.
So are they gonna have adequate parking?
Yes, we left eleven foot on the side property lines on both sides, it's, uh, we only.
So you're building a double?
Yeah, and so we'll have three car park and basically three, we park up to three cars on each side, hopefully that doesn't happen.
Any more discussion? Motion?
I make a recommendation, we file a P and Z, um, recommendation and, uh, approve this application.
Motion, Mister Reed?
Second.
Second, Mister Salvo, more discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
Aye, motion passes five two.
Put your time.
She's sitting over there.
Netherlands, application of variance is owning in order submitted by Patricia Netherlands, applicant is wanting to construct a covered porch on existing dwelling, they're requesting a variance of ten foot resulting in ten foot setback to the rear yard. Property is located three nineteen Saint George Street, property is zoned R two, two family district.
Good afternoon, thank y'all, uh, my wife and I just bought this property in December. Uh, Doug Netherlands, three nineteen Saint George, uh, we just bought this property in December and what we're asking for, there's an existing, uh, fourteen feet by eight foot concrete patio, two foot chain wall in the back. We're asking to add two feet to that to make it a ten by fourteen. Presently, there's steps at the end of that eight feet, but really, there's already ten feet to the step, so we're asking to remove those ten, those steps and add a two foot chain wall matching the existing patio so we can screen it in.
There were four letters of support, um, as well.
Yes, sir.
To the record. Anyone, um, in opposition to this application?
We haven't heard it yet.
Yep, um, council discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to follow planning and zoning recommendation and approve the application for the Netherlands located at three nineteen Saint George Street.
Motion, Mister Hoffman?
Second.
Second, Mister Reed, further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passed seven zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Application is Darby, application special reception of variance is on in order submitted by Bruce Darby, applicant is requesting special exception to allow accessory dwelling from existing structure on a parcel. They're requesting a variance of fifteen feet resulting in a five foot setback to rear yard and variance eleven percent resulting in sixty-one percent of dwelling size. Property is located at six oh five Buyer Drive, property is zoned R one, single family district.
I'm Bruce Darby, six oh five Buyer Drive. Applying for variance, they can vary my garage to an apartment, it's an existing, existing structure and I have three letters.
Anybody who speak in opposition of disapplication? Discussion with council? Darby has submitted three letters of, um, support. I did talk to a couple of the neighbors. Currently, it's a car garage with fourteen foot bay doors that will be converted into residence. Well, the aesthetics will change, which some of the neighbors are happy about that.
I follow P and Z recommendation and approve.
Motion, Mr. Reed?
Second.
Second, Mr. No Block?
Discussion. So is the current structure there not conforming to work? Cause there's a request for the variance of fifteen feet.
Well, cause it's, it was a shed beginning, which was a five foot setback. Right, so that's the reason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, okay. Um, any more discussion?
And I think, don't you have a stucco front on it, on that garage now, so it kind of conforms to the house itself?
All right, any more discussions? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion pass seven, zero. Thank you. Alrighty, let me switch back over to. All right, mayor's report?
Uh, yeah, first thing we got is just, uh, we got M M L coming up in the June and, uh, looking for voting appointment for delegates. We need to appoint one to vote and one for an alternate in case they not available.
I won't be making it, so. Who's making, who's attending?
What, uh, what are the dates on that, M M L?
Twenty, uh.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth through what, uh?
Yeah, the vote is the twenty fifth.
Vote is the twenty fifth. Have you, uh, have you registered in the council yet?
Yes.
We, we all registered? Okay. Uh, I'll be an alternate.
I think I'm gonna be out of town or not. You attending?
I'm gonna try if my job will let me go.
Mine won't.
I'll be, I'll be there.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't think.
Well, is, is that, um, is that the Tuesday? Is voting Tuesday or Wednesday?
The mayor.
It's the twenty fifth.
Tuesday.
Twenty fifth.
Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, so the mayor, is the primary and Mr. Reed will be the alternate? Need a motion for that?
Motion?
Motion, Mr. Salvo? Second? Any discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Who seconded that?
Josh.
I did.
Josh.
Seal, seal seconded. I made the motion, Mr. Seal.
Just make sure we note that Lewis and Hoffman are answered for that.
So Mike, you're gonna be the, you wanna vote? Okay.
Two guys missing.
All right.
Like the lease?
Yep. Appreciate it. Um, next, we're, we're aware, I'm, I'm, everybody's aware, but Paffett would be our new service for emergencies and everything. Um, they've asked if they could be housed, which it would be the first time we've ever had anybody housed. They're working out of our fire department on Station One on Main Street. They're looking at placing, uh, vehicle at, um, Waveland Fire Department on the highway, Diamondhead Fire Department, one on forty three, and one at Hootie's place. So we're hoping with this happening to increase in time needing for.
And one at our fireplace, did he say?
Yeah.
Did he say that, one at our fire station?
Yeah.
He said.
And so hopefully this is gonna increase, you know, response time. We feel like it'll also take away some of the calls that our, um, fire department gets called on. So right now, this, we, we're asking for a twenty one day lease. I think Heather has worked with Biloxi, they've al-, they already in Biloxi and Gulfport. She had worked with Biloxi and Paffett and all. She's come up with a twenty one day lease this evening. I think it's a thousand dollars a month, you know, to that. It'll give us time because, because they got awarded the contract maybe like last Thursday.
Yeah, so basically this is.
And they're taking over this Thursday.
Yeah, so apologize for the late notice on this, but this hit my desk, I think at two or three o'clock today. So all this is, is something simple, just to try to get them in the door, get them in house for the next three weeks so that we can come up with a, a more long-term approach. The rate may not be that, it may be that for long-term. But I, I don't know any of those details to tell you today, but this is just so when they start, um, operating on Friday, that they will have a place.
Our insurance is good. They'll also put us as that, on their insurance and everything and all. And again, once, once we get a chance to sit down with them, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out as far as supplies and all. I know right now, A M R, you know, they, they give us some of the supplies that we use and everything. You know, we hope to continue that as well and, and other things, you know, also.
So this just buys us three weeks.
Yeah, this gets us three weeks to negotiate, sit down with them, you know, get the fire chiefs involved. And again, all of them's gonna go through some type of thing and agreement and maybe we can all get the same agreement.
I was gonna say, we all need to be consistent in our agreements throughout the county.
It'll make it a whole lot easier.
If other municipalities are doing the same thing, we should probably have the same.
But again, it, it was just something.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they will, but you know.
It's gotta figure it out.
It was just something through the process that happened very quick, so.
Okay. All right, need a motion to approve commercial lease agreement between the City Base Saint Louis and Paffett EMS and Mississippi Incorporated in amount of one thousand dollars beginning May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four and ending June fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Motion?
Motion, Mr. Salvo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion pass seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
They're gonna have a different pay scale and have more employees, better employees.
Well, we, we'll, we'll have quite a few of our guys working part-time with them. That's another thing, you know, when Monty was looking at it, I think we have five or six.
Kind of response time has been issues.
Oh, it's been years.
Did they add, did they add vans, B L S vans or A L S?
I'm sorry?
I know this is a word of the county, but was part of that adding vans on the B L S or A L S vans, do you know?
I think a truck was.
I think they have one, one, uh, ex-, well, I think it is a truck that, that gonna be placed up there at Hootie's, I think. That might be in the south. I'm not sure. But they do have, I think it's five of them total.
Five, so was that more than what A M R was probably?
I don't even know if we had one.
Yeah, I don't even know if we have, we didn't even have one at all times.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, yeah.
But I, I mean, actual, like, B L S, I mean, the, the ambulances, I mean, there's gonna be more circulating, more stationed in Hancock County.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's either four or five of them gonna be here. It'll, yeah, you might admit, we'll have one, they want to put one in our, in Bay Saint Louis Fire Department, Waveland Fire Department, Diamondhead Fire Department, forty three, and then they'll have that, that truck, so.
All right, next, uh, motion sponsorship, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, Historical Society's wanting to put on a Battle of the Bay, um, and wanting to use the, the community hall. Mr. Chris Ross here to talk about it. And wishing for some support.
Thank you. I'm Chris Ross, President of Hancock County Historical Society. Before I get to the specifics of the request, I'd like to just share with you, uh, some of the current things we've accomplished here with the Historical Society. Uh, you'll hear, uh, do you remember? It's often the question asked and reminiscing about growing up or living in Bay Saint Louis, Hancock County. And many people find the answer to that question at the Historical Society. It may be a photograph of someone's ancestral home where great granddad is buried, a book on historical events and historical times and family and institutional histories, to name a few. Just in recent times, the Historical Society took a leadership role in the celebration of the city's bicentennial in two thousand nineteen. We wrote, directed, and produced a documentary film on the exploration of the settlement of the Mississippi coast by the French explorers. We produced a play and performed the play Orphan Train about children who were adopted by families in Bay Saint Louis in the early nineteen hundreds. The society was given an award of merit by Mississippi Historical Society for the production of this play. We had five performances of that play and each one of them, they sold out. It was free. So whoever won praises that. We presented an oral history of the establishment of the Standard Space Center from the individuals and families who were displaced by the space center. Each year, we do a Halloween tour of Cedar Rest Cemetery to educate adults and children about the lives of notable citizens. We sponsored the cardboard boat race. We assisted in the publication and distribution of Pat Murphy's book, Growing Up Downtown Bay Saint Louis. When the city was updating its website, we were asked to review the his, from a historical perspective, what is now in our website. So these programs are presented free of charge and we eternally generate our funds for these projects through grants and donation as we receive no city, county appropriations in support of our important mission, which is preserving and celebrating the history of Hancock County. The next celebration is the Battle of the Bay and the reason I'm here speaking to you today. In your package, you had an executive summary and you also had more detail about the Battle of the Bay. So, uh, celebration, which is in three parts. So, uh, again, what we're asking today is for the city, uh, we'd like the city to be a sponsor of the Battle of the Bay performance, uh, which we want to hold at the community hall. Uh, we'd also asking for a concession. We, we have to use the community hall for rehearsals as well as two days for performance. One of the performance days, we want Friday, we want to include, open it to the school system, uh, to be able to educate the children in the community. Again, this is free to the adult children of our community. And we would appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Yep, everybody got a chance to read this.
I think the breakdown, yeah, should have the breakdown of cost and everything.
Correct.
Um, in the packet.
Yes, so, um, ask city sponsorship, half of the rental fee, um, which is a, to me, it's, uh, we talked about never giving stuff away, but this is bringing back into the city. It's an event for the city, um, not just a social event for someone else to raise funds. This is actually an event that benefits the City Base Saint Louis by presenting our history. Uh, which is a, to me, is a good, good thing, especially if you get your schoolchildren in there. Appreciate y'all taking an effort and to, to move this forward and to actually do it. So it should be pretty, pretty neat endeavor, actually.
We're excited.
Yes, thank you. Um, any discussion on this?
The only discussion is, can we see about getting some sound boards and sound improvements at that center, possibly? And if we got, I don't know if they still got money and.
Yeah, they do.
Fun. I've been at two events lately and the sound just, is horrible in that building. You put a band on stage, it just, the acoustics are so terrible. We need to really look at doing something there, especially if we do a play or something where it's gonna be critical to people hearing stuff. You can't understand what they're saying half the time.
That, that is a, it's something that we're trying to figure out how we might mitigate that, uh, but you're absolutely right.
We, we need to get a sound engineer or somebody to look at that and put sound boards on the walls or a P A system. Something needs to be done, cause it, it's just horrible to.
If it can be done by September, we'd appreciate it.
Well.
You know how the wheels of government turn?
Is that something y'all can look into?
I'm getting a sidewalk after thirty years.
Yeah, thank you. That was the only discussion.
Yeah, no, you're right. And I, we talked to Rotary, I know Gary's part of Rotary and there, there was.
Well, we looked into that a few years ago and probably more like five. And there was some pushback from the architect about, the problem is, is the noise level inside. So because of the concrete floors, they have noise reduction pads similar to these, but they have the great, the, um, uh, the louvers over them to make it look like it's a courtyard kind of thing. And, uh, I think the only way you're gonna be able to improve that is you're gonna have to add some more of those with, you know, somehow, or just have to go against the, the architect who's against it. Yeah, there are funds, you know, that could be used for this, but, um, you know, it would be something the council would have to decide, say, hey, look, we want to move forward with it and come up with a plan. You know, put some more sound. And, and, and you don't really want to put carpet in there because.
No.
Food, and you know, it's, it's just maintenance and it's too big.
I'm thinking like some kind of curtains or sound boards.
Curtains up top, you know, the curtains would.
Well, I noticed the commu-, the church community center has, uh, ones hanging, suspended.
Correct.
And it's really quieted the inside of that, that, uh.
Sometimes when they have big events in there, they'll come in and do that.
Yeah, those, you can put internal rods.
They'll come in from the ceiling and all and drop.
Yeah, they say they put internal rods along the wall and.
Yeah, say oops and all up to that.
And possibly some more speakers in back, because all the speakers in the front, so it's just, you don't have nothing to surround.
It might be just separated, like you're saying.
We need, we need to. That's something we need to look into though, just.
That's down the road.
Yeah.
Mr. Ross is here for a defined mission.
I'll make a motion to approve the sponsorship of Bay Saint Louis and Battle of the Bay, uh, for community hall at a rate of twenty seven hundred dollars for the six days.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. No Block? Further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you very much. What was that motion again?
Seven, zero.
To approve.
Approve.
To approve.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, sir. Um, council business? Um, I, I got the SWIFT grant status. We'll talk about that. Council, any council have business? Talk about what we're getting into that? Mr. Hoffman?
No, I think, uh, I'd ask Mike about some drainage issues we're having on Holman Avenue and it's all in the works, but, uh.
Be in there tomorrow.
Mr. Reed?
Uh, Mike, uh, I had two, two citizens, um, um, Ms., Ms. Mitchell and, uh, the other gentleman, um, right, right beside Boys and Girls Club, the driveway going in there. They usually get to their homes through there. They had it blocked off. And I think they said somebody was dumping stuff in the dumpster and that's why they blocked it off, but, uh, they said that.
Blocked the road off?
Yeah, they blocked the road off, uh, and they wanted to, uh, wanted to keep it open so they can use it to get to their homes. Lonnie, Lonnie Bradley and, uh, Ms. Mitchell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll check on that.
All right, thank you, sir. That's it.
Mr. Josh?
I'm good.
Lewis? Buddy? Council, any council business? No Block?
Uh, yeah, I had a, a call from a citizen about there's a house getting renovated on Mole Street. Y'all familiar with that?
Very.
Yes. Sorry?
Yes, very familiar.
Yeah, and he, he was concerned that, um, that, that the damage to that house exceeds the FEMA regulations of fifty percent or more.
Would have to raise it. Fifty percent and then they would have to raise it.
Yes, and he, he said that he did a records request of the, the labor, uh, on that house was around seventeen hundred dollars to repair that.
The house was valued, I think, at sixty, a little over sixty thousand dollars. I don't know the exact number. Their estimate to make the repairs is thirty thousand dollars, less than fifty percent. We've been in contact with FEMA and everybody else, M E M A, FEMA, all of them. What they doing is correct. If, I think our ordinance says it's a ten years ordinance to where if they come in after this, if the roof gets blown off or any other repairs has to be made to this house, it would have to be lifted. And, you know, that's it. But yeah, they've been, we've been in contact with, uh, Ricky and him had with FEMA, you know, representatives up there, with M E M A in Mississippi. And, you know, different contracts. He gave us a price, broke down what it is. He's, he's a licensed contractor through the state of Mississippi and.
Oh, he does have a state license?
Yes, and whether me and you believe in numbers, he can do it for that. You know, is not the question, you know? But he's asked to have receipts and everything, you know, turn receipts in and show all costs. Ricky goes out there on a regular basis, even when they don't call for inspections, check, see what's being done.
Well, I guess his other concern was that, that, you know, that they used to have a meth lab there and.
Yeah, don't know. You know, we, we don't have that. We don't have anything that says, even if it was a meth lab, it's gotta be torn down. I got one behind me. They run out of V R B O every day, you know, and.
You have a meth lab behind your house?
I did. I didn't. Let's rephrase. I did not. But, but you know, we don't have anything that states that, you know, you have to tear it down. And, and look, that, you know, again, this is a, a smaller house there, guys coming in.
Yeah, I saw it. I went by it.
And, and they're building half million, three quarter million dollar houses. And, and they're building half million, three quarter million dollar houses around it, you know, and it, it does, you know.
Well, just as long as they got all their paperwork correct.
Yeah, you know, and again, Heather's been involved in it with everything, you know, on legal side of it, you know, trying to make them tear it down. You know, if that's the way we could go and it just doesn't support it.
Well, and I think that that particular homeowner wants to see this house torn down.
Yeah, they don't want to see it razed. They want it torn down.
And there's, there's no way for us to tell these people you have to tear down their house.
We paid one time for a house torn down. We're not, we're not gonna pay for it, no.
Remember that. Okay, I'm good.
Yeah.
Um, oh, one other thing, um, the culverts on Spanish Trail and Pecan Park, they're, they're about, they're about clogged up. The two entrances coming both in and out. If, uh, you can just get them on a list to blow those out, that'd be nice. It's not really digging it. You're gonna have to blow it out because
It's the culvert itself.
The culvert's lower than the ditch.
And Pecan Park.
On Pecan Park and Spanish Trail, and then the, the back entrance is also getting a little bit, um, clogged up. And, and, uh, someone was complaining about the, those power, you know, those power poles on St. Charles getting they left a whole bunch of cut up poles in the ditch.
Yeah, we, I think Rodney contacted them about having them removed.
Okay.
All right, good. All right, um, real quick about the SWIFT grant. Lot going on here. Lot of conversations, lot of, this guy's been working on it since October twenty twenty-one. She sent a timeline out. Yeah, it's just been a, a slow grind, quite honestly. And, um, and I've talked to Ms. Curtis about just the, yeah, about, you know, the, this program was set up, um, for the state. And just feel like it was set up incorrectly because there was no grant administration, grant administrator assigned to this project. They put this money out here, but nobody can use it because there's nobody can administer the grants. We talked about, you know, if it ever happens again to S M P B P D or G R P C or someone else that can be given this money. And it would be much cleaner to, to operate through. Uh, right now, we're muddling through, trying to figure out how the heck to, to make something work, quite honestly. You know, I've looked at different proposals, a red thing, I've got an Excel spreadsheet of stuff here, trying to make heads or tails out of it. Um, from the city's standpoint, you know, the city's, we looked at the pass through ability, right, as part of, um, what they're saying is pass through. But the, the thing that keeps coming back is the city is one hundred percent, one hundred percent responsible for this grant because we are the sub-grantee. Right, and that's the, that's the, not the rub, but that's the worrisome part of how, how do we protect the, the city, um, contractually or, and I don't know. That's the, that's the million dollar question is how do we, that's how do we protect the city of St. Louis asset, well, not asset, but the city of St. Louis, since we are the sub-grantee. We're, we're responsible for that, even though we are pass through. I think there's been some some better movement on maybe trying to find a grant administrator, um, that would take over this project, um, which would really be helpful. You know, to, to move it forward. Yes, ma'am. Um, so, and I really wanted to bring it up. I mean, I, like, gave me the stuff, I got it printed out for the council, you know, to, to have copies of. I did a PowerPoint on this from when we, we sent out questions to M E M A. They sent it back. I put them all down written, um, trying to figure out, you know, what's where do we go from here, right? And I, I think the end of the day, the city is just still feels uncomfortable being a sub-grantee and having something go north on us or south or east or west, and then we're holding the ball. And then, you know, and understand there's some legislation that says we can do certain things, but M E M A says you, city of St. Louis, are the sub-grantee. You will have to explain to the homeowners the, the do's and don'ts, what they can and can't do, but ultimately, city of St. Louis, you are responsible for this project.
Yes.
And it's, it's an uncomfortable feeling.
Well.
You know, and, and again, and we are, we're gonna work through it, right? And how the heck do we do work through it is, is what I'm, I think we're all trying to do, right? So the more I read, the more I try to find, again, I think there's some hopefully possibility of something better
I agree with that.
Happening. Uh, but I know you've, you've been drug, not through the mud, but you've been beating on walls and kicking on doors and really trying to get this done. And we appreciate your tenacity. It's just this grant was put out there with no way to use it, and that's the, that's the terrible part about it.
It is, and, um, what I would like to do, because I've prepped a statement and, and I've waited two and a half years to give it. So I'm gonna do that, and then I would like to read.
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tammy Curtis Guy. I don't know. Tammy Curtis Guy. It's three one zero zero Roberson Road. All right, Tammy Curtis Guy, three one zero zero Roberson Road. Okay, and yes, I know that this is unprecedented, obviously, because everybody feels like they're going headlights, and I get that. So I'm gonna read a statement, and I just want to go over the timeline because this has been a lot of just constant pushing doors and, and breaking down barriers and contacting people. This has been nonstop for two and a half years. The two, uh, Joe Garcia and Mike Garcia are here with Rise Construction simply as to offer information. They were instrumental in getting information along this path. And now they're actually working on homes that are funded with SWIFT grant in Louisiana, so they may be able to, to shed some light on some things. So, um, just let me read my statement because I'll feel better about this whole thing. And it was what I gave to you, but then I decided to change my vacay plans. All right, first, I do want to say thank you to everyone, to the council for putting this on the agenda tonight. I know it's untarded territory, I really do. It would seem the light at the end of the tunnel is at hand, and my hopes and prayers are we can move forward and fashion out a blueprint for the rest of Mississippi to look to. And I was, um, Sidney Hyde Smith's office actually called us the Guinea pigs today. There have been countless hurdles to overcome since we discovered this grant in November of twenty twenty-one. It became a full-time job on top of continuing regular work and daily living as well. But leaping those hurdles and almost three hundred and fifty pages of forms, emails, and documents later our home, as well as the one of April Birds, and she's here tonight, received award letters from FEMA and M E M A. And just very quickly, those, that amount for our property is one hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. And for April's, it's one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred dollars. We're at ninety percent, she's at a hundred percent. Um, let's see, where was I? Then roadblocks with how to proceed with the project, naming the city of B S L as a sub-applicant stalled everything. And then Representative Tim Lattner wrote legislation that would give B S L the authority to move forward, hopefully without concern of being in conflict with Mississippi Constitution Section sixty-six. This was finalized with the signature of Governor Tate Reeves on May thirteenth. If the first round of SWIFT initiative grant funds had been captured and realized, and I know we have to have something different, I'm just saying what could have happened. Thirty homes would have been given the aid needed to help families and communities. The safety and health of communities relies on all of us doing what we can to prepare for the flooding that we know will be in our community's future. This grant hopefully makes this possible to make, to many going forward. As for the two identified homes in B S L, that would require the city signing on as the pass-through entity. This puts the burden and true financial focus on the homeowners while allowing the city to be hopefully the guardian at the gate. Also, this is doable in four twenty-five percent increments. Everything to safeguard the city from being on the financial hook with this grant has been done that's in our power, including number one, legislation, hopefully covering any fears of this going against our state constitution. Number two, the city has the option of being a pass-through. Number three, a pledge from Clayton French with M E M A to expedite payments as quickly as possible. And number four, two homeowners that understand the burden of twenty-five percent increment payments are on them at the front end. I dare say there is no project that the city has taken on that can always have a hundred percent promise of perfection. But I, along with others, have worked for two and a half years to get as close to this goal as possible. We have a moment here to truly be a place set apart as our city's motto states, let's all work together, embrace this, learn from this, and grow from this opportunity by being good stewards of the resources we are blessed with. And, uh, before I go into the timeline, the Sun Herald and Nidalee did a great article on this, and she reached out to Louisiana and to New Jersey. And she got, um, the FEMA list about the amount awarded and utilized that first round that I'm talking about that we're included in. And for Louisiana, thirty-eight point nine million dollars were used. In New Jersey, nine point nine million dollars were used, and in Pennsylvania, three point five million dollars were used. And in Mississippi, it's our two, three hundred and five dollars and two hundred, three hundred and five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And of course, that hasn't been utilized yet. So with that being said, I just want to go through the timeline, and then I'll be done. All I've had my say. Okay, y'all have it in front of you. Um, so after Ida, we flooded for Zeta and Ida. So in October twenty twenty-one, I first contacted with Janet Henderson of M E M A and Jason Sinichi seeking flood mitigation funds. And then in April, so nothing happened then, there was nothing available. April ninth, twenty twenty-two, Janet Henderson informs me of meeting, of a meeting and invite sent out to the city engineer about the SWIFT current grant. On April eleventh, I reached out to Jason Sinichi and Tom McConnell to ask if they would be attending the meeting about the SWIFT current grant. On April twelfth and thirteenth, I receive an email from city engineer stating it seemed we would qualify for the grant. So then on the thirteenth, Jason submitted requests to M S Flood's to submit application for S, for the SWIFT grant, a SWIFT, SWIFT current initiative grant. On April twenty-fifth, Mississippi Flood's responds to Jason that they had received the request and would be in touch. Then we have to jump forward to July twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-two. City engineer informs application has been submitted and waiting on additional comments. August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, applications are under review by FEMA. Additional info was requested, which city engineer states they are working on. Then the property owners were asked to fill out letters and approve of national flood insurance policy. On September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting with the city engineer, city attorney mayor, and Rise consultants who are here. And they very, very helpful in giving information, which they're much more versatile now because they've been working with this grant. On September fifteenth, FEMA requested an update cost estimate. The buyout was offered and declined. September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, city engineer informs property owners that we are below the FEMA threshold, which was good. Also alerts that we are responsible, us, for ten percent. Of course, April's not responsible. She's got a hundred percent covered. September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, property owner emails info to city attorney about possible bid process. City attorney states the city is waiting on the grant to be finalized and, uh, would let us know. Uh, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, revive list of six item, I'm sorry, received list of six items, and y'all, I know I have typos, sorry. Received list of six items from city engineer required by FEMA by October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. The debt, and then October twenty-fifth, the deadline of the October twenty-eighth, which was impossible, is extended to eleven twenty-eight, twenty-two because that, that actually included completed, completed engineering plans stamped and signed, which cost five thousand dollars to make that happen. And that's fine, but it did. Um, okay, November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, informed by city engineer that all documents have been submitted to M E M A. So December ninth, info we had to resubmit to M E M A because it got caught up in the nether regions. December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, we were required to have a resistance pilings test, which was performed by Rise Construction. Um, January second, twenty twenty-three, the resistance test results were reported to the city engineer. February twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, compliance letters were drafted, signed, stamped, and sent. April twenty twenty-three, Senator Hyde Smith's office forwards property owners info binders to FEMA showing all that has been done. And this were two binders, about three hundred and fifty pages total. And there's, I'm gonna give y'all this binder because it's all the backup receipts of emails for everything in here. May eighth, twenty twenty-three, the FEMA award letters are submitted for both properties. And then May ninth, M E M A award letters are submitted to Bay St. Louis for both properties. May eighteenth, homeowner is informed by, informed by council, May eighteenth, homeowner is informed by council member nine days later. October twenty twenty-three, councilman meets with property owners in their homes, states an A G opinion might be necessary as well as legislation. October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, property owners met with councilmen and city attorneys. City attorney cites that grant goes against Section sixty-six of Mississippi Constitution. November twelfth, twenty twenty-three, property owner sends out red binders, I'm that property owner, uh, red binders to twelve city county, county and state officials seeking an A G opinion because that was directed that that might be a necessity. And, um, at the end, you'll see the, the list of binder recipients. December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, I contact with Representative Tim Lattner who agreed to seek the A G opinion. Uh, Mr. Lattner was the only official who agreed to help with this. February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Representative Tim Lattner secures A G opinion on February twentieth. Almost done, guys. Excuse me. April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, Representative Tim Lattner moves forward with submitting legislation. May one, twenty twenty-four, special meeting to vote on resolution in Bay St. Louis. May second, twenty twenty-four, legislation passed the House and the Senate. And then May thirteenth of twenty twenty-four, this was signed and approved by Governor Reeves. And so that's what I have, and I thought it would be better to not do a lot of minutia because all the energy and exhaustion and emotions I've spent. So now it's just the facts, and this is where we're at. If we don't move forward with this and let us be the hamsters in the wheels, which we're glad to do, this is not gonna happen. And it won't happen for people going forward either, because this won't be the last time that Mississippi's identified for this grant. And I do hope that y'all utilize the, the two Garcia gentlemen over here because they drove all the way over to answer any questions. Like I said, they have worked directly with houses that were funded by this grant, so we have a wealth of information right here. And Doug, I did want to say, you said that not ordinary people can put up the money, but I'm, we're as ordinary as you can get.
Well, no, I'm just saying, you know, it's just, we talked about future grants.
My husband's a writer.
Right.
I'm an artist. But that causes me to be very creative and resourceful.
Right.
And so I think all of us have that ability, and we have got to, we've got to come together as a team and make this happen. Because I'm not the only person that needs their house raised. April's not, and we have resources. We just have to figure it out. And I think if we utilize that legislation, that would help us. Um, I do think there's one other person that wanted to speak on this.
But no, when, when we were talking that day, you know, when I said it, not all individuals had a resource to do that, was referring to this, this is the grant program. If it was implemented through a grant administrator. Because right now, M E M A says you have to front one hundred percent of the money to do this. M E M A says you gotta be paid one, according to M E M A, the state, the letter, since the project has to be one hundred percent complete before you get reimbursed. I know their show, I read the documents where they're doing twenty-five percent draws. Well, M E M A said it's a hundred percent complete. You know, and, and that's what's confusing about, so.
Then maybe we need to get with Clayton French
Yeah.
and find out, because that, we were getting mixed signals on that one.
No, but I'm, you know, that's my question, because, you know, because like most individuals that need their house raised can't front a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
The grant program, that's what it would do. It would pay for that, not out of your pocket and reimburse. So that's what M E M A was talking about, the mechanism
Right.
of implementation of these grants. They're great to have the money, you have a pot of money, but nobody in the state of Mississippi's used it because couldn't figure out how, you know, we got a whole coastline. Why is nobody else raising?
I agree, and I agree, because it's been, it's, there's been too many roadblocks.
It is, it's just.
But if Clayton French said it a hundred percent has, that we're getting mixed signals, because that's not what was discussed.
Clayton French has said that multiple times.
And that, that was the question.
Then that is where we need to start, maybe, getting him to say that this can be broken up into bite-sized pieces.
Well, I think Josh and I both.
With Clayton too, and he said he thinks to get this off the ground, they may make a conception, do twenty-five percent draw.
There you go. Because that's what I heard.
Looking at, um, timeline, by the time you get the first draw, there'll probably be a hundred percent complete with the house raising, because they could probably tell us how long it would take.
Yeah.
Was it take three months to raise a house, two months, something like that?
You want them to come up?
Yes, please.
Come up, identify yourself for the record. Can I have that picture? It's beautiful.
Hi, I'm Mike Garcia with Rise Construction.
Yes, sir. What's the typical timeline on?
Between three and four months. And you're right, that there are homes in Louisiana that we elevate that we will get one hundred percent complete before the first, we call it milestone, or, or case. Obviously, as a contractor, we don't like that, but we understand it, so. Ourselves and the competitors, excuse me, ourselves and the competitors, we get credit lines.
Yes.
To mitigate that, right? So, so we understand that process, we, we get it. I just want to make one point, or actually two, but the Swift Grant comes from the FEMA Grant Program. In other words, FEMA, and I guess what I'm trying to portray here, FEMA identifies, and I think it was five million dollars in, in this area. They identified that there are some serious issues of homes that are in serious danger now. Therefore, we're going to issue this five million out. So it's really no difference as far as pay structure or anything from the regular grant, we'll call it.
And that, and that was my thing, even if we're allowed to submit in twenty-five percent increments. Before the first twenty-five percent ever comes back, you'll be a hundred percent complete with the job.
Yeah.
Is what I'm thinking.
Absolutely.
Because it's going to take four to six months to get each reimbursement. So if you wait till it's a hundred percent complete, you'll get it in four to six months. Or if you do twenty-five percent draws, you're still going to be.
Yeah.
Staggered a while before you actually get the money back to the homeowner, so.
And understand that contractors, ourselves and some of our competitors understand that. And, and those that are worth their salt, which we're very proud of, right? Is, are, are, they get it and we wait, right? And look, FEMA's not perfect. We understand that the city's burden is, is, and we're very sympathetic to that, right? We also know, and we've said this from day one, right, that you need a manager. And this is back in twenty-two.
Oh, we know.
You need a manager, however.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I, I don't think it, with her house being elevated and done and over with, maybe she'd be a great, I could tell you she'd be a great, but that's not why we're here. But anyways.
We agree.
So the second thing I want to point out is, there aren't many contractors, which is what kind of got Joe as the owner of the company. And it kind of piqued our interest, because we spoke to four different homeowners that were visited by, I guess, when they were realized they were eligible. And, and they were told so many different practices to elevate these homes, and that's what's basically scared them away. So we said, I think there's an education need to be done about this. And, and we want to bid on these jobs, so we don't want to have a conflict either, right? So, so we, we, in, in, as safely as possible, we kind of explained the questions that were asked, just to kind of help it along.
And that's the other scary thought too, is not every contractor will be as qualified as you. Not every contractor may have the means to float the project to get reimbursed. And there's no guarantee you're going to be the contractor to win the bid.
That's right.
It's the other thing that, and that's what we've explained to Ms. Tammy the whole time, is there's no guarantee that you could be the contractor to raise her house. Because we got to go through state procurement laws, which is going to dictate bid process. Whoever wins the bid will be the contractor, so.
Yeah, but.
If it was a different way, I wish we could do that, you know? I mean, but that's just some of the variables in this whole process that we've had to discuss a few times, is there's no guarantee who could be the contractor.
I think the biggest problem is, and I call it a problem, but it's a good thing. Once these two houses get raised, there's going to be some applications out. And, and so it will get overwhelming for the city to pay, we get that, we, we, we do get that. But like I said, FEMA and, from what I understand, Mima, have an understanding and a guideline that these contracts have to. So, so you have to kind of trust that process too.
So, so can that be written into the contract to where you would wait to all the funds or payments are turned in? Or invoices are turned in at the end?
I mean, that'd be something my boss would have to answer.
You know, I mean. Because, because working with Mima, we're, we're told the same thing, that, you know, you can send invoices in, but they're not going to pay them until the project is finished. You know, we're trying to get funds right now. FEMA says no, Mima says no, but, you know, we just got told again lately on a project that we don't get, they're not going to give us any funds for this until the project is completed. You know, and then we're waiting on FEMA here, it is two years, three years down the road, we're still waiting on to finish this project, you know? So I mean, that would be something.
Ms. Tammy, can you come back up? Okay, this is me, Gary, Gary No Block. So my question that I've been wanting to ask, and I just never have. Why couldn't you take like that FEMA or Mima, you have a letter of award, correct? And take that to your local bank and say, hey, listen, I have this award here. I'd like to get a line of credit on the house so that we could pay this. And it could take a year to get paid back, but, you know, but we have all the approvals and move forward with that. And that way it would take the burden off the.
We have the money, that's the purpose of it, we have the money.
Can, can you come up?
I need you to come up, Meg. Wait, before I forget, Josh, on what you said about, you know, they might not get the bid, but you, when we had our very first meeting and they were there, we, I told you there were only two, I had found the two people, the two contractors that could actually raise a brick house from the slab up. It's amazing what they can do with their technology without stripping the, the bricks and ramming a rod through our house and destroying the house. So, and you said, well, that would probably limit it for us at least, because, and that was your words, because it is brick. And it would require the technology they have. And there was one other, I believe, I can't remember his name, it was in Hattiesburg. And I had reached out to them, in Hattiesburg, into RISE, and that's how I got to know them. Because I had one person come in and say, oh, we're going to strip the bricks down and we'll run a rod through here, we'll like butcher your house. And I said, bye Felicia, because that was not going to happen. And I said, some things got to be different. And that's when I started researching, and I found their technology, and I found the technology of the other construction company in Mississippi. And I had them both come and talk to me and about costs, because this is before I knew about the grant. And so that is when I addressed it to you, in that very first meeting we had, when they attended. You said that might limit it because they're the only ones with that technology.
Yeah, Meg, and we wasn't, and at that time, I wasn't.
I'm just saying, that's, we understood that there was only two construction companies that can even do that, so I'm going to let.
And that's going to all be, had to be in the bid specs or whatever to put out the bid, would be part of that writing, that language in there.
I'm Perry, guys, thirty-one hundred Brookston Road, Big St. Louis. We, people are getting hung up on the funds, we have the funds. We can, if, if we need to, I don't know why we need to put an escrow account to you guys to hang on to the money, I don't know. But I know this issue's come up a couple of times, Heather asked us if we had two hundred thousand dollars set aside so we could get the project at one time. I don't, we don't need two hundred thousand dollars, but you tell me what we need, and we'll get it, and we'll put it in an escrow account. If that's going to hold up this, let us know what it's going to take to get going, but please, it's not the money, we need to move on beyond that. And these guys are going to work.
Well, I mean, if, if you're self-funding, then, and you need the city as a pass-through, that, that, you know, to duty grant administration, I'm for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. So what do we got to do?
I did want to ask, because you, so we would just take the award letter to the bank and, you know, if we needed to, I mean, I don't even know what that is, but maybe you can explain that later, Gary.
Um, so I, I was just using as an example.
Okay.
You have this, hold on, you have this letter of award for these funds. So if I, you know, if you wanted to get a banker, go to your local bank or whatever, like, I don't know, I'm not going to say one, but. And just say, hey, listen, I have this award, we have to use the city, it's going to be tricky. And, you know, and you show that, you know, you, you do whatever the bank tells you to do.
Like what, Perry, we've already done that, we've, we've got, we've had that set over a year.
Now, there are going to be associated fees with that. Because of the engineering and, you know, some attorney fees and stuff of that, so.
We know.
And maybe, I know someone said something about some liability or something, and maybe even you have to sign a letter of subrogation, holding the city harmless for anything that these gentlemen.
Right.
You know, didn't see, I mean, you can lift the house and all of a sudden, I know I do construction and I find surprises all the time.
I do have a question, have any of y'all read through, and it's a long document about the Swift Current Grant and what it requires? Have y'all read through that?
I've got a little part of it.
So they lay out anything and everything that has to be done and accomplished and benchmarked and earmarked and all of that. So I, I know April wants to speak.
Superior repetitive loss program.
Repetitive loss?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm Joe Garcia, I'm the owner of RISE, yes. So Swift came around just for the people who can't wait. It, it, it's a serious thing that need to be prayed immediately.
Or two repetitive losses in ten years.
Taken an average of two to three years. Of course, RL, which is default on repetitive loss, but they come up with ten percent. But yes, I think Swift. And look, I was out there in New Jersey, I was selected, one of the contractors back then after Hurricane Sandy, up in North Carolina, along, along the coast and all that stuff. Hundreds of homes. Be parrot, so. Believe it or not, slab homes, brick homes, or the east, south.
Who administers the money in Louisiana?
Uh-huh. It depends on a parish, so, just an example, Jefferson Parish, they fund the money through the parish and then get reimbursed. That's a big parish that they can afford, right? Um, Orleans Parish, same thing, but Orleans Parish tends to like keep the money in their bank or, and then pay out. So we, we, we try to do one Orleans Parish and every other parish in between so that we can afford it, right? But, but it all depends, and then some parishes don't, they hire management companies, right? And we've actually asked a couple of management companies to maybe talk to you guys about it, I don't know if they've ever done it. But, um, so we deal through that. And, and so it's, and I guess when you were talking about being a steward to this money, right, I think you go between. I, I think some of the languages in getting through, that go-between and that being a steward also entails the engineering side, the permitting side, the inspection side. That's where your stewardship comes in, because they're going to take your approval to be able to issue that money out. That's what we experienced, we can't get through the city inspection, we can't even be considered paid, right? So it, it's something that's, that's where your stewardship comes in, right? And so we haven't heard that side of any of that.
Right.
Yeah, so, but we do think you're going to need to be ready for that. Look, we, we encounter parishes now that couldn't even tell you what to inspect, we have to call them and say, hey, I need you to come inspect. Uh, because, you know, they, they want to try to manage themselves, which they're perfectly capable of doing, but they don't understand what to inspect. So we kind of give them that education so that we don't run into FEMA saying, all right, you know?
And those are CDBG, right?
Yeah.
Community Development Block Grants, right?
Okay, good, yeah, you know, so that's, again, we're talking about funding, right? City base St. Louis grant administrator calls, engineering calls, if we do the sub-grantee. Or on most contracts, if we're the grantee or sub-grantee, we're required to get engineering services for the city side of it, right? So we have to go get engineering service, plus they have their engineering service. So then we got legal fees, right? So we, when the application was made out, we only requested engineering fees, we didn't, it was something new, right? We wasn't sure what was going on there, we thought it was just, we're going to get disapproved. Right? Correct, right, so we didn't. Right, yeah.
I don't think.
It was new to us.
Did it though, the, all the steps weren't out there, the information on this. But because we was under, I think everybody up there was under the understanding when we approved this, that it was done just like when Mr. Nekes' house was done. It was done between the contractor, the homeowner, and FEMA, Mima. City wasn't involved in it, all we did was write the letters of recommendation, showed the losses and everything, and this. This is a total separate thing than anything that's ever been done. You know, if they'd have took it the other way, we wouldn't even be sitting here today.
Yeah.
If they'd have, they reinvented the wheel for something that the wheel wasn't flat on.
I agree with that, you're not going to get an argument from me.
Trying to roll down the road.
Yes, sir.
And the state of Mississippi doesn't allow what Louisiana does, doesn't allow what Pennsylvania, they got their own grant, you know, people and everything that are doing this.
But that's why we got that legislation, hopefully to, to smooth that, right? But here's what I do want to say, is that when I spoke to, I, I, y'all, I was here, it was by divine providence, I even found out about this grant before the deadline happened. But when I spoke to Janet Henderson, she said she had sent out the invites, and that was the whole reason for the city engineer, who, the powers that be for each county or city to come to that, I don't know if it was a webinar or an in-person seminar, but they, they were supposed to have laid out all the things that you said was the reinventing of the will. That was laid out for them. And so they, they had the time to ask and push and pull those questions. And so we still went forward, and I'm grateful, I, I'm thankful, thankful we did. Because we do have a, a moment here that we can figure this out, get it done, because we know we're going to be in another named storm. We know that, that is a hundred percent, we know that. That we choose to live here, and I wouldn't live anywhere else, but we're going to have a named storm. So Mississippi is not in this next round because we didn't have a named storm last year. But we will have a named storm, and we will be dropped in there again. And we do need to let these families raise their homes. And if we can figure this out, if we take bumps along the way, we take bumps along the way, but we'll figure it out. And here's the thing, Bay St. Louis will be the first one to figure it out in all of Mississippi. We have a moment here, we can toss it, or we can go for it.
So, um, so it's just listening to everything that you're saying, really, it sounds like they need to meet with the administration, come up with a timeline and, and a procedure.
Yeah, so it's, yes.
I mean, they're saying they have funds to pay.
Yeah, so, so there's.
They have an engineer that can do the job.
Yeah, so they, again, we, we talk about grant, grant administrator calls, engineering calls, legal expenses from the city standpoint, right?
Well, we just need to get a total on that.
Ma'am?
We just need to get a total on that, like you said, we would love a chance to sit and.
Right.
Figure this out.
Okay.
But we would like to be part of that conversation.
Absolutely, it's your money.
Yes, it is.
That was also brought up in twenty-two, I think it was, that there was budgeted of two hundred thousand per home. Obviously, we bid per square foot, it, I believe it came up to one fifty-eight.
Don't say you bid.
So.
But yeah, so.
So if, if it, so if it came out, basically what I'm saying is that, that the two hundred allotted per home allows for grant management funding as well. Which is what we deal with our grant managers in Louisiana, where, you know, they don't get paid, that we get paid kind of deal, so there, it's, it's in that same fund.
Is that included in your, in, in your contract or the proposal, are those fees included in it?
Negative, no, so the contracts are, and this is a FEMA guidance, FEMA guided thing, the contracts are with the homeowner and the contractor. The city is held harmless, as a matter of fact, in some parishes, if you don't have that sign, signed letter saying that the, that the city or the parish is held harmless, that, that one thing that's very important, we're raising your house, therefore you can't build an apartment underneath it. Those things have to be in, in order before they'll issue a permit. So those protections are there. Whenever we have a problem with a homeowner, like say they, they want a new driveway or something, which is grant-covered, they call the program or the parish, and the parish says this is between you and the contractor, if it's got nothing to do with that. We, 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 our contracts cover everything, just like if, if we're just dealing with a homeowner. Our, our relationship with the cities or the parishes are permitting, engineering, we provide the engineer, right? That's something that's part of, yes, that's part of the contract.
Okay.
Um, so the, and matter of fact, we've actually surveyed the elevation certificates, all of those are a requirement for us to provide in order to get a milestone even approved for me, right? So, I mean, it's a big, we have staff in the office that just deals with getting milestones, right? Because it's hard, it's a lot of paperwork. But, um, this, this is completely separate from the city. It's like having a contractor come bid on building a house, and the city is the one who manages that to make sure it's built, right? Same scenario. But I do, I will say that, that it'd be great, which is why it frustrates Ms. Tammy and Mr. God, but, um, it'd be great if since they have the money, just let them elevate the house. But you need some things in place.
I know, if you're working in conjunction with the city as a pass-through, we, Mr. Lattner helped us with the legislation to get it passed on a state level so that it can pass through. And I think, you know, it just sounds that we're just talking about the same thing. And y'all just, everybody needs to sit down, come up with a plan, implement the plan, and understand who's doing what.
Yeah.
And does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, and that's, again, you know, I think that is the, again, if FEMA's, if FEMA has a template letter, I think we asked Mima, if Mima had a letter, contract letter, they said, no, that would be something City Base St. Louis and the recipient would have to come up with. Well, you telling me FEMA has a template contract that we could use that just says the city's whole, whole city homeless? Okay, because we asked Mima, and Mima says, no, that's between you and the homeowner, right? So then it's like, okay, if we missed this T and missed this I, then it's us, right? And, and again, it's, we want to move forward, and how do we move forward, but protect the assets or the citizens, you know, on both ends, right?
A wealth of information, and this is scary, and it is the unknown, and so if we can bring in some known information, it's not so unachievable.
Okay. Ms. Bird?
Um, yeah, my name is April Bird. I live at forty thirty-five, Conde. This is very upsetting. Um, I am retired. I live on social security and I'm on a fixed income. I got a letter. My journey through this was different than Tammy's. I got a letter from FEMA on May the second, two thousand twenty-two, saying that I was eligible for a grant, for the SWIFT grant, uh, with, um, participation in the grant opportunity strictly voluntary. If you'd like more information about our grant, please contact. So I called. I couldn't get to the phone fast enough. How, and it says, free, no, no cost to me.
Right.
Okay, so I'm, I said, hey, let me run over, where do I get the application? I wanna fill it out. Nobody knew anything. I, well, MEMA contacted me. I called Bay St. Louis. Bay St. Louis didn't have any information. Um, I did, um, I have a, an agent, um, that, her name is, um, Cheryl Ladner, and she said if there's anybody that would know anything, it would be Mr. Tuniti, or I'll call Heather, my daughter. So she called Heather and, and while I was sitting in the office, and she said, there was something going on, but we don't really know what the guidelines are. So then we, you know, then Tammy and I got together. Well, they awarded me the, you know, the money. We went through all the different channels that you had to go through, all the timelines, and then it's like you have this money. You tell this little old lady that she's got this money to raise her house, and we can't touch it.
Yep.
What's wrong with this picture?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I see a light at the end of the tunnel, but I hope it's not a train.
It's the frustrating part, right? Because they, they did, they put all this money out there, but there's no way to get to it. I mean, it's, it's the, it's that step of big government, let's throw money at it.
There is a way, but the thing is.
And let's, let's not, yeah.
But the thing is, when this grant was supposedly looked at every, you know, from all the af- aspects. I don't think Bay St. Louis really thought that this was gonna go through. They didn't. They didn't wanna fool with it.
We, we raised, we raised houses in City-Based St. Louis since I've been on council. We raised multiple houses.
But not through MEMA.
Not, yes, through ICC, increased capacity climb through FEMA and MEMA. Same thing. We, we have done it, so.
Well, okay, then what's the problem?
Just, because it's a new program that has no, no mechanism, no funding mechanisms.
They invented a new wheels.
Right, yes, ma'am, and that's.
We have the information.
We do have the information now, but that's the problem. There was no funding.
We got the information right now.
Yeah.
From, from legislation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, we're, we're agreeing. We're, we're working together, but it's.
That information wasn't there two years ago, three years ago, whenever this process started.
Yeah, that was the problem.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
So to say we've done nothing and didn't care about it, that's not a true statement at all.
But, no, it's.
Our attorney, our engineer spent a lot of time on this project, and so far, I don't think they've sent a bill on any of that. So, so don't say that the city of Bay St. Louis has done nothing and, and don't care about doing this anything, because that's not a true statement.
They had an opportunity, whoever, had an opportunity to file, what was it, five percent for administration bid, and nobody filed.
But again, at the time when it was done, the city of Bay St. Louis didn't know that this grant was gonna be like it was. It was under everyone's understanding that it was a grant that's always been done, and that's the way it was. We didn't know they invented a new wheel.
We thought it was just a sponsor.
At the time when it was put in, you know, so.
Well, we just need to.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, it needs, it needs to move forward.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. Ms. Bird?
I think everybody agreed.
Ms. Bird?
I'm just, you know, very frustrated, uh, and I.
I'm frustrated too. We're waiting, we waited two or three years to get money from FEMA and MEMA and everything.
Excuse me, so hold, hold up, stop, oh, stop, or, Ms. Bird?
Just one thing.
I have a question, Ms. Bird. Today, do you have the funds to raise your property?
I, I can get.
Okay, I mean, because again, right, if, if somebody, you know, today they're telling me a hundred percent. We have to have a hundred percent complete cost done, and then now we're talking about maybe we can break.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, maybe, you know, if that's possible, but going forward, you would have, we'd have to fund it and then get reimbursed over time, you know, like these gentlemen said, they're used to that, you know, Orleans Parish takes forever.
I have another contractor.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, but just as long as, you know, you have the funding, if, if MEMA does say, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take twenty-five percent draws, right? Um, but that's, we have to figure that. Yes, ma'am.
Well, we just need y'all's help all of this.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am. Who we got? Suzanne, Ms. Suzanne?
What's going on? Uh, I'm Suzanne Marshall. I live at one twenty-five Carroll Avenue. And, uh, I, I wrote part of my speech earlier before I got into all this, so. But, so about a year ago, I spoke with a house lifting company out of Louisiana that also provides services in Mississippi, and they informed me there were mitigation grants available to lift houses that could cover up to one hundred percent of the, the cost like this lady back here got. So they suggested I contact my lo- local government about the grants, and that was when my journey began to try and find mitigation grants available to lift my home. So I contacted the city who said they knew nothing available, so I called FEMA. Then FEMA directed me to Janet Henderson with MEMA, who I con- contacted July twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-three. And Janet informed me that she knew nothing available and said I should contact my local government. So I did that again, and the city said they know no mitigation grants, so I'm going in circles at this point, but. So March twenty-seventh of this year, when I found out about the SWIFT current grants through Tammy Guy, I reached out to Gene Hoffman, and he asked the city about, um, mitigation grants to lift homes. Again, nobody, uh, knew of anything. So I contacted Janet Henderson again with MEMA and asked specifically about the SWIFT current grant. And that's when she said that I had to contact the city that they needed to, uh, basically apply for me. And they, um, I was, um, given the name of Mike Rizzo, and I sent an email to him a few weeks ago. And he said it wasn't looking good, figuring out, out how to disperse the grant money, and then he would get back in touch with me if anything changed. So, long story short, it took me about a year just to find out that, that there is mitigation money available, at least at times. Um, I'm losing my voice. Um, so I have lived at one, uh, one hundred, one twenty-five Carroll Avenue in a dip for twenty-six years. And before Katrina, that area was a preferred risk flood zone. Uh, during Katrina, there was approximately twelve feet of water on the beach side of my house. And fortunately, I had a minimum flood, uh, flood policy at that time, and I was able to, uh, move back into my home in July of two thousand seven. I, I was not eligible for the thirty thousand in FEMA money at that time to lift my home since it was a preferred risk zone. In two thousand twenty-one, I had a second flood claim for over nineteen thousand when my yard flooded two feet in a tropical storm, and I lost my HVAC and ductwork. So for about the past six years, we've been dealing with flooding from just heavy rains that didn't always impact us in a dip. So nineteen to twenty of those twenty-six years that I lived there, we did not flood at all. On April tenth of this year, there was water running down from across the street, like towards the Montsland, between Keith Rubio's and whoever, the Blue Runner Bean guy in the big house over there. It was like a river coming down through there. Um, and I've never seen that kind, that kind of flow through there in twenty-six years. So between drainage systems that have been neglected for years and inadequate drainings with increased runoff due to new construction, rising sea levels, rising ocean temperatures, and storms that are getting stronger, we are at high risk than ever before flooding. And we all know that we're currently going into another hurricane seas- season, and sooner or later we'll be impacted again. In fact, this year already, the Atlantic incriminating sea temperatures are at end of June highs according to that forecast, so it's kinda pretty scary really, because this trend has been going on for years. So with the rezoning after Katrina, I'm now in an extremely high, uh, flood zone risk. And unfortunately, the maximum flood insurance coverage for a structure is two hundred and fifty K. And additionally, flood insurance is steadily increasing. Mine's projected, uh, currently to reach four thousand a year. And unfortunately, I mean, the reason I think I can rebuild my home for two hundred and fifty thousand on Carroll Avenue, because I don't. So, um, so we are sitting ducks in the area that I live in, as, as many others are as well. And I would like to, why would the city not want to help us mitigate those losses that, um, additionally help people stay in their homes since the flooding, flood, the cost of flood insurance is gonna drive us out also. So I understand there's many things that have to be worked out with the SWIFT grant, grant, current grant, but my hopes are that the city will, will embrace this and he- and try to help to figure out how to, uh, mitigate flood damage and, uh, save homes, but that's all I have.
Thank you. So your, your home was flooded how many times since Katrina?
Uh.
Twice, I think.
Minor flood in about eight or nine times since two thousand eighteen due to collapsed pipe clogged drains.
I mean, so you, you, you filed flood, flood claims once in two thousand twenty-one? When you lost your air, air conditioning?
Yeah, it had two feet of flooding there probably due to the almond drain being blocked.
Okay. I'm just looking at the, the guidelines for repetitive loss, severe repetitive loss or general loss.
Unfortunately, I'll probably have a third loss before long.
Yes, ma'am. No, yeah, I'm just looking at the, the guidelines here. Thank you. Um, a lot of information, um, yeah, a lot of discussions, um, I think a lot of people talked and talked and talked and, um, you know, I think, again, where do we go from here, right? It's, it sounds simple. Let's just do this, right? Um, you know, if FEMA, the FEMA has the guidelines to write a contract, um, how do we, how do we, how do we write a contract to identify the city, let's the contractor and homeowner go into a contract, um, if the MEMA says, hey, we can do a twenty-five percent pass-through, you know, is it possible that, you know, you do twenty-five percent, homeowner pays contractor, we get a bill, we send it to MEMA, get the money, it goes back? Um, you know, again, it's, it sounds simple, but I think it's the, the devil's in the details and it's the way it's been, right? And how do we, how do we, how do we move forward, right? I think that was the biggest thing. How do we continue to move forward and, and not go around in circles? Um, I, I, we, we are, we, you know, we can ask the administration. Um, I, the administration is working on.
Mm-hmm.
How to make it work, right?
So when do the award letters get signed? Because we can't do anything, couldn't even take it to the bank unless it's signed.
I don't know who sign, I don't know who signs it quite honestly.
Y'all, y'all do.
Okay.
I have them right here.
I, I didn't, I'm, I'm, I'm learning as we go, because I didn't read that in part.
That's why I have it. Just let me show you real quick. My handy, and, and you're gonna, you're, this, you're gonna be awarded this binder. This is, um.
You know, my, my.
Basically, while she's showing you that, what my understanding is that all we have to do is be as a pass-through, uh, we don't have to touch any of the money. Um, that's between the contractor and the homeowner.
The, the problem is, in, go back some, because like the mayor was saying, that we're getting the bad rap, we haven't done nothing, blah, blah, blah. We don't do anything. That, it's been a scary process because a lot of unknowns. Signing the award letter makes the city the sub-grantee, makes us fully responsible. So if we sign that tonight with no other information in place, we're on the hook. Not Miss Guy, not Miss Bird.
Right.
The city of Bay St. Louis and all the taxpayers, so it's not just simple to sign this and move forward. It's not that simple. And that's the whole thing is we get a lot of, it's just so simple.
Even as a, um, pass-through, you're, even as a pass-through?
Even as a pass-through.
Okay, and even with the legislation, all the hooks are still in place?
We're still a sub-grantee.
Yeah.
We haven't, that part of the thing, if I'm correct, and Ms. Heather can tell me, but we're still a sub-grantee until that, till we get something in place to put them powers and responsibilities on somebody else, we can't sign that paperwork, in my opinion.
But can maybe, do y'all know what they're speaking of, like maybe?
Come to the, the checks will come to the city.
No, no, no. So the checks come in two names, the contractor and the homeowner. The management companies, if you were to hire a management company, then they would say homeowner and contractor come meet at the office and sign this check, and then of course they give, it, it's given to the contractor. So we have never.
Not in Mississippi, how we've been told.
That is not how this happens in Mississippi. I, look, I will tell you, if that happened in the state of Mississippi, my life would be much easier. That's not how, that's not how, if that happened in Mississippi, we would have already been done with it, but that's not what happens.
That's probably guided by Mississippi's laws, and I get that.
Correct.
But, but I'm just saying that that's, it's, when, when you, I get what you're saying, believe me, and I'm very sympathetic to that. You, you don't wanna sign something without having it in place.
And that's where the constitution came into effect.
Of course.
Because MEMA's gonna give the city the money.
Yeah.
Once the city gets the money, puts it in the city's bank account. It was illegal to write a check to an individual that did personal improvement on personal property with taxpayer money. So that's, Louisiana may be totally different, but Mississippi, that's how it worked. And that's been the big hurdle we've been trying to cross.
What, what the legislation does is it allows the city of Bay St. Louis to then write a check out to these homeowners for this reimbursement.
Yeah.
So that, that's the, it only allows for the SWIFT grant, the funds is described as SWIFT grant. So it's only the funds that receive from the federal government that then, because that, that was a hang-up, okay? So even if we pass through, FEMA's only going to, FEMA and MEMA have both said multiple times, now, they change. But they have said consistently for two years, we will only reimburse the city of Bay St. Louis. So then the city of Bay St. Louis has to figure out, how do I then take and cut a check to these private homeowners to make this legal in, in, in the city? And the other caveat here is how do I spend general fund money, because it's not SWIFT fund money at this point?
Yeah.
For.
You can bring it out per, yeah.
Yeah.
The engineering fees, the administration fees, the fees that people, we, we were not aware that we're going to have because I think at the time, the city of Bay St. Louis was under the impression that we would have somebody helping us administer these grants. That's not the case. So that's been conversations that are having is what do we do now to bring, to bring that money in? Because even still, the city of Bay St. Louis cannot use or should not be using general fund money. So that, that, that's still the issue that we have been trying to resolve for quite some time.
And that's why I brought up her line of credit.
Where, where's the legislation in Grotto?
The legislation allows you to use SWIFT funds.
About who you?
The city of Bay St. Louis. I don't have the legislation exact, the author's in here, so maybe he would like to address that, but it allows, it defines funds as, um, the SWIFT grant. Like I said, I don't have it in front of me, so, but it's, funds are described as monies from the SWIFT grant from the federal government.
But you still don't have wording of how to write the check out to who you're writing, any that you're writing.
Well, what, what MEMA has consistently told us is that contractors have to be paid, and I, I am not privy to whatever conversation Mr. DeSalvo has had. So when I talked to Clayton French within, I would say probably ten days ago or less, his message to me was these contractors have got to be paid by somebody. So, you know, if the city of Bay St. Louis can, can be a pass-through entity, that's fine. The problems and what we've, what we've tried to address is being a pass-through entity, even if we can take and say, okay, homeowners go out, procure this, go out and do everything, that grant a document that they have up there in their hands still makes Bay St. Louis as a sub-grantee the responsible party.
Yeah.
So then if the homeowners don't go out and they don't procure something properly, and they don't get reimbursed, it still ultimately falls on the city of Bay St. Louis and on these guys. They're not getting reimbursed, and it's the city of Bay St. Louis's fault. So we're trying to figure out how to take that burden either off of Bay St. Louis, and I think the cleanest way to do that is to find an administrator that can come in that has worked with these grants before, um, to help guide homeowners through this process. Therefore, the city of Bay St. Louis is safe.
Yeah.
And the homeowners are safe, because that is the missing link to this puzzle. Because the city of Bay St. Louis is not in the industry of going out and raising private homes. And, you know, we, and we still, and one thing, I, I made sure of this, because I thought, I was hoping, okay, if we do a sub, basically a sub-sub, let's just say that, if we do that, can that take, especially state? Because in this situation, your state of Mississippi requirements are actually more stringent than your federal government. Most cases, that's not, but this particular threshold of money, it would be easier to follow federal guidelines. So I hope that maybe if we just bypass and we did this sub-sub grant, that we could get around state of Mississippi procurement laws. Because once you have state of Mississippi involved, you have to have an engineer, you have to have, um, this has to be sealed bid process. It's, it's not, you know, it's not the micro-threshold with, with federal government that you could go out, you know, under the two fifty. It's not there. So you have to go out for actual seal, so you have to get engineering stamp drawings, specifications, go out, put it for sealed bids, take sealed bids, make sure all of your federal CFR two hundred, which you guys probably are familiar with, all of that. You have to make sure all of that documentation is done, make sure it's published right, make sure. make sure it's published right, make sure it's advertised right, then come back, then get your grant agreement or your contract with them, then go through, make sure all of these documents are together. Um, then explain to homeowners that if somebody that we don't know comes in and, um, underbids you guys by five dollars, you gotta go with them, we don't, we don't have a choice. So all of this to say that this is, this is, this has been my life for two years, trying to figure this stuff out. So, and, and I, I am fully aware of that. And so that, that's what we're, where we're trying now, is we're trying to figure out, can we bring in, can we amend, can we amend this to get a grant administrator in here to help everybody feel safe? Because right now, there's just so many, I mean, even look, being frank, sitting here with you guys as a contractor, basically selling this, I mean, you're looking, I mean, you, you are teetering on some anti-lobbying clauses that probably would make this illegal federally. So I don't want, you know, I don't want that to happen, because I need your, I need your help, because you're the only one here that knows what you're doing, because we're not doing this in the state of Mississippi, so I need you. But I also don't want y'all to be conflicted out when you have to find, you know, so there's a lot of steps here, and so that's where, when this is all, i- it's not as easy as it said, and, and the funding portion of this, quite frankly, I've asked multiple times if y'all have had funding in place, and in fact, your answer to me was, we have part of it. And so that was the last time, and I, I think from the other party, I'm not arguing with you, I'm telling you what, what was said. And so, well, that's good, I'm glad to know that now.
Alright, excuse me, excuse me.
They can bring in and make sure that every, every box is, is checked and everything is something. I am working on that, and I've been working on that, but.
They're working on it.
I'm working on it now.
Now, now, yes. It's new. Today.
Yeah.
It's new. So I said something is moving.
Nobody wants to bid them, yeah.
Yeah. Nobody wants to go do it, yeah.
But, but look, there's, there's several things that you had said just now, that, that I think that's almost a burden a city doesn't need to take on. I'll give you an example, engineering is done by the contractor. The jobs are bid.
That's where, okay, so here we get into Mississippi law, following Mississippi procurement law, I can't have you, I wish I could. But I can't, you don't fit under the class that would allow, I, I can't allow that.
Well, no, no, we're not the engineer, we get a stamped engineer, we get, as a matter of fact, we found a local engineer, right? So it, it, it's actually very.
I do, but then I have to have an engineer that administers this, I, it's not just engineering plans, then we have to go in.
I've, I've said multiple times, it's too bad Jason works for the city, because he's actually very qualified for this kind of work.
Great.
So, but, but what I'm saying is, the jobs are put out to bid, the homeowner, and just telling you how it works out there, and I, these are FEMA guidelines, okay? So, um, I know getting into Mississippi, it changes some things, but, but the job is put out to bid. There is so much money allotted for that property, the FEMA, I, I, I don't know if it's been asked, but there's so much per square foot allowed for these properties. I think two hundred thousand was thrown out there, a long time ago, right, in, in one of our meetings, but that amount is there. You can get ten bid, and they can be a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, and the homeowner in every parish, according to FEMA's guideline, can choose whichever contract they want, contract. If she chooses the highest bid, if she chooses the highest bid, FEMA's gonna say, oh, sure, they can do it. But he's gonna come to this square foot price, and then the contractor, and we get told that all the time, the contractor has to say we'll do it.
I wish that was the case, but that is not what, we are under a different, we are under region four, y'all are, I don't know.
Different FEMA regions, different state laws.
Different rules, different regulations, I mean, everything that is telling me, look, again, that would make my life easy.
Yeah.
If I were being told that, that would make my life easy. That's not what FEMA has told me, that's not, or that's not what Mema has told me, and that's not what FEMA has told them. So, and, and quite frankly, I've talked to people in the northeast, and that's not the way they're doing it either. So, you know, that's, that's, that's what they said, they're exactly, you know, people I've talked to, the swift grant is not swift.
No, there, there's gra- a grant administrator is the key word that is being looked into. How do we find one, right?
Well, I know they bid, they bid every year.
Maybe, maybe there's someone out, maybe, maybe they're out there right now, and maybe, you know, possibly, we could find one and talk to one. We are actively pursuing that person. How about that? So, I mean, that's what I can tell you, right? Um, and that's, because I mean, when we start, start this conversation about it, it's about a grant administrator, right? That's what we need, and that's the direction we was going, and that's how I started this conversation earlier. Um, but yes, and it, this has been great, great conversation, because I think we all kind of agree that, you know, yes, y'all work in Louisiana, but unfortunately, we got different rules and regulate, even from FEMA.
Yeah.
Their region and our region are, are totally different.
Yep.
It's ludicrous that we have different rules from Louisiana, Mississippi with FEMA. It's just crazy, but we do, right?
The thing here is that this is all negative and it can't go forward.
No, I, no.
I do think, I'm gonna say, because I'm here, I understand what they are always saying, and I understand their frustration level, my frustration level, and I, I know this before, it's crickets, when we go months and months and months and months, well, I will do, I'll wait and wait and wait and wait.
I will.
Sometimes we have to push the envelope, and it was time, a year later, it was time to push the envelope. And I'm not saying people haven't done anything, but it seems like nothing.
Yes, ma'am.
Forward until the citizens stand up and talk again.
Okay, um.
I think this, I mean, you know, there's meetings, there's things being said, there's people working on it right now. Do we call you with every update? No. I, I run two businesses, I'm a city councilman, my life is full, I barely spend time with my wife half the time, so I can't call you every time I make a phone call and talk to somebody, I just, I'm just saying this things that happen.
So what we'll do is we'll put this on the, the next city work, city council meeting, we'll just ask for an update on it, at least to keep it, keep talking about it. I think Ms. Smith is, you know, working on it, um, I think it was worded what we're doing. Um, yes, it's, it's frustration. We're trying, we're trying to identify a person to be a grant administrator, okay? I mean, I.
And, and to even clarify that, we are trying to amend this grant or figure out how to amend this grant to see if FEMA will even allow for this money to be added. So there are lots of talks about that, trying to figure that portion out, because that is fee number one, is how are we paying for that?
Yeah, the grant administrator will be a fee a- as part of this grant.
I think that's what that five percent that was offered, the reach out.
Yes.
And nobody really understood what that was, I get that totally.
And we didn't apply for that.
Of course, yeah, because, because you didn't know you needed it.
Understand it, and we.
So, so understand that if you have a flood plain manager, some parishes choose not to get a grant company, you know, whatever, they use the flood plain manager. So something like that, yeah.
Right, okay. Good discussions, thank y'all so much for coming, um, enlighten us, thank you for, um. We have committed to look for the grant administrator. Can we get the grant amended for that five percent fee, uh, to pay for a grant administrator? Um, that's. It depends. Well, we manage our own grants, but they're not like this, they're, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar grant, that's. Yeah, yeah, and, and as, as we have catastrophes, right, right now, what, in three day, in ten days, the current grant runs out. May thirty-first, the current, current grant runs out, thirty million dollars, nobody's applied for it. Um, nobody's applied for it, but in ten days, it runs out in state Mississippi. Because, but nobody's applied for it, and no, and, because nobody could use it. That, but it had, it had other, you didn't, it didn't follow because it had to have a storm, a named storm.
The state of Mississippi is not in that funding.
Yeah, it was a different.
As far as I'm, I know, our closing, our round closed, because we did not qualify, I mean, thankfully, we did not have a nationally declared disaster in that
But it was a different bucket of money.
Second or third, whatever round of funding that was.
Right, but yeah. Yes, ma'am. Yep. Yes, ma'am. So we'll, we'll put this back on the city council agenda, next meeting, ask for an update, I will ask for an update, I'll give you an update. Um, and we'll continue to move forward. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty then, public forum, Mr. John. I'll just take that picture home. That's beautiful.
Thank you. Y'all wanna exhibit this?
Cool.
Exhibit, we have a whole, um, we did work with Audubon Society, and these, these, they worked with us, they commissioned me to do twelve paintings in period, and twelve points. These are placards starting at fifteen point, to let people learn about the short words, and then they turned it to a book. So I only brought this to show you that this is what we do, why we moved here, and we need y'all to keep us grounded, okay?
Yep, I agree, thank you. John?
Y'all sit back and take a breath, huh? I hate to say this, but I haven't even been paying much attention, and I'm exhausted. If you want to take, you don't need to leave the room, okay?
I'm out of water too.
Why don't you have a, take a three-minute break?
Good, let's roll.
Alright. John Omen, one ten Demontlezan Avenue, and my house is okay where it is. Personal note before I get to my topic there, uh, you know, some time ago, I learned that uh, my absence from a city council meeting was.